Good morning.
Good morning.
The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, February 4th is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm letting you know that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you are here to speak in favor of or in opposition to a project, please put your name and address on the record and tell us the reason for the support or opposition. We are here to fact find, so give us new information. Use your time wisely. If somebody has already mentioned the reason for your support or your opposition, put your name on the record and just let us know that somebody has already mentioned that. Today, I'd like to just acknowledge the passing of Clarence Jee Jones. He was a leader in our community for very many years, and we have to acknowledge his passing on the first. Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the first order is the extensions for 9/30, calling BOA 799-148-951 to 959A, Dorchester Avenue. You moving up? Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilltean Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, here in Boston. This is an Article 80 Small Project Review project. We're still finalizing design review with the BPDA as required under the project zoning decision. We are also finalizing design review of parks as they are within a short proximity of the Ryan Play Area off of Dot Ave. So we request a one-year extension in order to finalize that design review and eventually provide us the opportunity to commence with final permitting and construction.
Madam Chair, this permit expires on May 11th of 2020, so I'll make an extension, a request for one year from that date.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Second.
There is a motion. How about a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 771-1273 Allen Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Ken Goldstein from the law firm Goldstein &amp; Herndon, 822 Boylston Street, Chestnut Hill. I represent Dr. Razam Malik and Ms. Amma Siddique, who are the new owners as of January 13th of 3 Allen Road in Brighton.
What did they, why are they requesting the extension?
They want to legalize, well, it's already been legalized as of two years ago, the two-family use of the property. Every other house on Allen Road is either two or three family.
So we approved the change of occupancy from a one to a two-family?
You did.
And you just want an extension to get the work done?
Right, and the work is really just code compliance.
Madam Chair, the extension doesn't expire till February 16th of 2020.
May I have a motion, please?
Most prefer a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. They're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BZC 298-46, 1954 Commonwealth Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Ruffo, Smith, Doug and Dula Ruffo of Boston for the applicant. This is a request for an extension for one year from March 31st, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. We have obtained our approval from the Aberdeen Commission by the historic.
Is this for the, for the old hotel? What is the project again?
The project is saving a, an historic building, moving it forward and putting a new structure and addition around the back.
Oh, yes, of course.
We have got the approval for the envelope through the Aberdeen Commission, what the exterior is going to look like, what the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. We've had a number of meetings with the BPDA, including Lance Campbell, and in fact, just submitted stuff to him this week to review.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this doesn't expire until 3/31 of 2020.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 791-773-1808, Rear VFW Parkway, BOA 791-768-1208 VFW Parkway, and BOA 791-775-1208D VFW Parkway. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Dennis Quoffey, Attorney at McDermott Quoffey &amp; Miller, representing the applicant for this one. Good morning. This matter was approved by the Board in 2018. It expires in March of this year. There were some lengthy review process, Article 80, successfully completed and then through the Board.
Dennis, remind us what the project was?
It is almost immediately across the street from Catholic Memorial High School. It's a very large parcel of land, some unoccupied, some occupied, some with some large commercial buildings.
You mean the, you mean?
It's VFW Parkway and Baker.
Baker Street. Baker, so you mean the West Roxbury High School complex?
No.
No, oh.
No, directly across from CM.
From Catholic. Oh, right, the rear, okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. It does not expire until 3/30, 2020. Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 463-655-120, West Fourth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, representing the applicant, 33 A Street Development LLC. This is a mixed-use building with two floors of commercial space and nine residential units above at the corner of West Fourth and A Street in South Boston. The current extension granted by this Board expires on April 19, 2020, and we are seeking an additional one-year extension in order to secure alternate space for the Intrasano Studio, which is the business that operates in this building, so that they can then do the project.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension?
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 694-026, 77 to 85 Liverpool Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. The Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this Board granted relief back in, on February 13th, 2018, for a 22-unit building located on Liverpool Street. We are in the process of completing BPDA design review. This was also subject to Article 80. We're prepared to move forward once Article 80 is complete, and requesting a one-year extension.
Madam Chair, this doesn't expire till March 2nd of 2020. Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 642-862-301 to 303 Border Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Matt Echols, Victor Agon Toscano, business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. With me is Caleb Manchester, on behalf of Board of Development LLC. By way of brief background, this was an Article 80 large project that was approved to demolish the existing structures and erect a 64-unit condominium home ownership building, as well as a retail use. Project also included the adoption and maintenance of a Boston Public Schools Park, which is directly adjacent to the project.
Let me ask you, is this a valid permit or is it not? Is the permit valid or not?
The permit technically did expire January 13th of this year. We did submit all construction documents as of mid-December. We also pulled a separate demo permit, which was acted upon. The structures have been raised, as well as a shoring permit.
So does that, so does that mean the permit's valid or not?
So in speaking with the plans examiner, he's ready to issue the permit. He did request that we come back before you to request an extension.
The dot, the i's, cross the t's, you're that close.
Exactly.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just a heads up, start your process before, so we're not this close to expiration, okay?
Understood. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case for G card, calling BOA 103-5843-116, Chandler Street. This is a confirmed occupancy, it's a three-family and a complete renovation of three units. The violation is Article 32, Section 32-4. This is G card. Name and address for the record, please.
Edward Perry, 116 Chandler Street.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Rowan Trust, and we do have the water and sewer approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Calling the next case for building code, calling BOA 103-5760, 15 to 17 Swallow Street. This is, this is constructing new roof deck structure and access by existing roof hatch. The violation is the ninth edition, 780 CMR 1011 stairways, Section 1011.12.12, roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with this Section 1510.2. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. This is Jerry DePiero from DePiero Construction, located in Boston, Mass. I'm here to hopefully get a favorable review.
So tell us, this is for building code relief?
Yes.
Tell us what triggered it?
It's a bubble there right now, existing bubble and stairway that leads to the roof, and the building department is looking for a penthouse.
Mr. Olick, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, so, so you want to put a hatch in?
The hatch is already there, it's existing.
Yes, an existing bubble, as opposed to, yeah, ordinarily, we're reluctant to grant building code relief, but this is one of the few cases where we don't mind. You've got, you are removing the possibility of a penthouse and operating instead with a hatch, a bubble. So I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the 9/30 cases, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Address counsel, please.
437 Frankfurt Street.
For the record, calling BOA 103-7522, 437 Frankfurt Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. We had some conversations yesterday with the Opps Neighborhood Services. We feel that a deferral is appropriate based upon some of the comments and opposition that we've received. I think that a short deferral will be helpful in order to try to address some of those concerns.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do anything till March 24th.
That's fine.
March 24th or 11/30?
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Hearing them, we'll call the first case, calling BOA 101-3465, 10 Geneva Street. This is erecting new four-story multifamily dwelling, seven residential units, accessory parking at grade. The violation is Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. To my right is Nicholas Yaba, owner of the property. To his right is David O'Sullivan, who's the architect for the project. Madam Chair, this property is located on Geneva Street in East Boston, which as of late has seen a lot more focus for redevelopment, and for good reason. Geneva Street has been a neglected area of the Jeffries Point neighborhood and Go Street area, and certainly could use a lot of investment, both in infrastructure as well as development. Currently, this site is used in connection with an existing auto repair shop that's located directly across the street. That auto repair shop is also owned by Mr. Yaba. That property has been owned probably within the Yaba family for almost 100 years. As development continues along Geneva Street, there's certainly a preference to see redevelopment of these sites and eliminate these industrial uses for purposes of residential development. This project would involve the construction of a four-story, seven-unit building. We are providing seven parking spaces, one for one. Parking is a little bit challenging on Geneva Street based upon its current condition. Each of the units would be two-bedroom, two-bath, with an average size of about 900 square feet. And as I said, we include seven parking spaces. This is intended for home ownership, so each of these units would be sold as individual condominiums. During the process-
I'm sorry, so why is there, since this is new construction with a fairly large lot, why is it hard to meet the parking requirement?
So parking requirement here, I think, would be a total of nine spaces. Seven spaces are being proposed. Generally, in the Go Street area, one-to-one parking seems to be acceptable, and I know that was not the issue or the concern during the neighborhood process. So to add two additional spaces, probably be a little bit tight on a lower level. I believe we're also including, bear with me one second, I believe we are including a unit on the lower level in order to address ADA accessibility issues. And otherwise, we would have to eliminate that unit for more parking, and you likely would add an elevator to the building.
And so this is, so this is garage parking, right?
There's garage and surface parking as well to the rear.
Okay. And no roof deck?
No roof deck, and that's specific for this particular project because of the concerns that we did here in the neighborhood. There was one abutter who lives next door in a newer building. That building's height is 30 feet. They don't have any roof deck presently on their building, but in the event that they incorporated a roof deck, they didn't want the further impact. We actually did a pretty good job trying to keep the height of this building down as well, even though we are at four stories, we're 37 feet 2 inches, which is just slightly above the 35-foot height limit for this area.
And it's hard for me to tell, is this going to be at the lot line, the front yard?
It will be, it'll be a modal setback, so whatever the setback is that's been established by, I believe there's four buildings already built on Geneva Street. I believe they're all at the lot line.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addresses most of the concern of the abutters, and as well, this proposal received support from members of the Go Street community. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Council of Savi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Alicia Payne here in behalf of Council Flaherty's office, wishing to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
With design review.
Yep, pending BRA design review.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-3467-255, Maverick Street. This is demolish an existing one-story and erect a new, mixed-use four-story building containing nine residential units and one local retail unit with accessory parking at grade. Violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, retail use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per dwelling unit. And Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Again, with me is Mr. Nicholas Yaba, as well as David O'Sullivan, the architect for the project. Madam Chair, this property is a pre-existing, non-conforming use, presently occupying the site as a retail store at 255 Maverick Street, which is located on the edge of the Go Street neighborhood, but also as part of Jeffries Point. Our proposal would be to raise the existing structure, which sits on a 6750 square foot lot, and erect a nine-unit multifamily dwelling while retaining the lower-level retail as well. We would add, we'd be also adding a total of nine parking spaces, so again, a one-to-one ratio. This upon completion would also be intended for home ownership. As part of this process, we did hear from the community that retaining the retail space at the lower level wasn't positive, and they wanted to see that included as part of this building. So we did include that as part of our proposal. This property sits in the 3F 2000 district. By way of relief, we're required to seek a variance for the non-conforming use of multifamily as well as retail, but the retail is a pre-existing condition. We do meet the minimum lot size requirements at 6750 square feet, as well as the lot width at 67.5 feet. We would be also respecting the modal setback that presently exists along Maverick Street. We are able to meet the side yard requirements on both sides at 3 feet, 2.5 feet being the requirement, and we're also improving the condition that presently exists with the building. The existing retail building goes all the way back within almost about 5 feet of the rear property line. Our building would be pulled back to be compliant with Article 53 at 30 feet, which is a condition that was, that was favored by the rear abutter. Our building would be also four stories, but again, 37 feet 2 inches, so we're trying to be contextual with the surrounding area. There is a four-story building located nearly to the right of this property. We feel that we'll be within, within line of that. We do provide open space at about 192 square feet per unit, which is below the 300 that's required, so we request a variance for that. And then with respect to the parking, we are proposing a total of nine parking spaces, where 12 would be required.
And so this sounds like it's a neighborhood retail, a small convenience store?
That's correct.
You're bringing it down to 1,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so that probably minimizes the parking need for that. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are fine. How far is the, the head houses for the elevator, correct?
Yes.
And how, how far is the setback from the front facade?
Should be about, I would say it's about 10, or it's about in the center of the building, side to side, and it's about 15 feet off the front.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal received the support from the abutters and as well from the Go Street Civic Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Council of Savi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Alicia Payne here in behalf of Council Flaherty's office, wishing to go on record in support also. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-5626, 8 Hancock Street. This is a single-family remodel, alteration to the roofline, keep the current height, redesign, second-floor bedroom, south-facing, five-foot outwards to match the floor below. Excavate basement two feet to dig out. Violations, Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restrictions, and Article 62, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'm David Sisson at 345 Taunton Avenue in East Providence, Rhode Island. I'm the architect for the project. And I'm representing Oliver Childs, the homeowner.
Can you address the record?
Oliver Childs, 31 Kenmore Street, Newton.
So this is not a property you live in, then? It's an investment property?
Correct.
Okay. So tell us what's being proposed?
The house is currently a three-story row house with a very short basement, and we're proposing digging in the basement for additional living space, which triggers the FAR problem. The house, we're also proposing raising the roof towards the rear of the third floor to get better head height at the third floor level. And there's also a small chunk of the house that comes off the back that is quite narrow and long, and we want to expand that at the second-story level towards the left-hand side as you face the house. And that's to get a little more space in a room that's quite long and narrow.
Let's talk about the basement. What is the proposed use in the basement?
Part of that is mechanical space. There would be a bedroom down there with a egress window towards the rear of the house, and there'd be a bit of living space down there. And we're doing a bathroom down there, too?
Yep.
And a bathroom down there also.
So this would stay a single-family dwelling?
Correct.
And then tell us about the, the third floor?
The third floor is a master bedroom, a bathroom, walk-in closet, and a single bedroom at the third floor level.
So in total, how many bedrooms will there be in this building?
Four.
Four bedrooms?
Four.
Be four bedrooms, okay? This is a conditional use because it's a 3F and the FAR. What's, what's the FAR?
The existing FAR is 1.5, and we're proposing 2.1.
And what's required by code?
2.0 is required by code, so we're slightly over.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are okay. You mentioned that you're going to dig out the basement two feet. What will that end up producing in terms of ceiling height?
I think we're going to have at least eight feet down there.
Correct. Yeah, I think it finishes seven, eight, I think.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Seven foot eight inches in height.
Okay.
Finished height.
Yeah, finished height, seven foot eight.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Olick, with the layout, there's no possibility of that bedroom, that basement becoming a separate unit?
I don't, I don't think that's a concern.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this proposal. An abutter's meeting was held back in December and was lightly attended by neighbors in the area who had no issue at that time. We also received a lot of support from the neighbor right next door to this property. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve. Do you need design review on this? It's pretty de minimis.
The dormer, it's Charlestown, the dormer.
Okay.
We just had, we want to take a look at it.
Okay. All right, then, make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 962-282, Foddy Berkeley Street. This is construct an outdoor amenity space for roof deck patio and bar, enclosing mechanical and structural systems currently on the roof. Construct a deck support structure. Violation Article 64, Section 21. Bar is conditional use. Article 64, Section 22, the building height is excessive. Article 64, Section 22, the FAR ratio is excessive. Article 64, Section 22, the rear yard. Article 64, Section 34, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermit Quentin Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me to my immediate right is Eric Shinrock, who is the Executive Vice President of Mount Vernon Company, the applicant and the owner. Also to my right, far right, is David Snell from PCA Architects. If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Passed out to the board some handouts, presentation materials. You'll see the background on the site and the proposed roof deck on this existing hotel building in operation, also an outline of the extensive community outreach and responsive actions and letters of support, which pertain to direct abutters, the neighborhood group, and the Ellis Memorial School.
Tell us about the proposal, please.
I'm sorry?
Tell us about the proposal.
Yes, so about, the Mount Vernon Company has spent the last five or six years upgrading this existing lodging house hotel that is seven stories in height, and it's been repurposed, and the new concept is called the Revolution Hotel. It's recently got a lot of accolades for a really well-run, upgraded hospitality amenity. So you have an existing hotel use. At one point in the 50s and up until recently it was purchased, there was an old roof deck structure that was on there. We were before this board in 2016 for the grant of relief for roof drop structures to install air conditioning up there, and now we would like to continue the upgrade and introduce a food and beverage cafe seating area up there that is not dissimilar to what you're seeing in hotels around the area, which have been upgraded or are new. For example, the Revere Hotel, or if you've been to the Colonnade.
So is this just for summertime use, or is this expected to go into the fall?
Yes, yeah, mostly. You may have some opportunities in the shoulder season, but if you look at it, the plans, this is open seating, right? And there is a structure that's up there, and that's what drives the apart, the zoning case, which is for restroom lavatories and access for the override.
Yeah.
And we've been able to situate that. It's a pretty big roof into the core. One of the things I will mention that you have in your presentation, too, is we engaged a sound engineer, and we did a demonstration project in the neighborhood where we brought up monitors and played music. And the virtue here is that at seven stories, if you know this neighborhood, it's between Gray Street and Appleton, across from Ben Franklin Institute. Most everything is much lower, and so that helps to mitigate the sound.
However, when Ben Franklin moves, or when something changes there?
Yep.
So just tell us about this project. Tell us what you're proposing to mitigate noise, what are the hours of operation?
Yep.
All those details that we need to understand.
Yeah, so this project, it's just a little under 2,000 square feet of the roof deck area. It would have, as I said, a food and beverage component, which includes a bar. Dining will be offered. No live entertainment. We're not seeking to do live entertainment. That's one of the things we worked with the community on. We would be, hours of operation are until 11:00 PM during and on the weekends till 12:00 midnight, which is again, pretty similar, if not less than what other hotels do, but it's also what we worked out with the community. This new owner's had a lot of positive engagement. You see that in the letters of support. We also have a main person of communication.
So it's basically summertime, some shoulder activity, 11 o'clock during the week, midnight during on the weekends. Definitely no live entertainment.
Correct.
And what is the noise control if people just, you know, enjoying themselves so much? What are you going to do about that?
We're going to have active management there, but as he referenced, we did extensive noise studies at the request of the abutters, which showed that there was virtually no impact. Our capacity up here is limited by the plumbing counts to about 100, 110 people, so it's a limited group, and we've studied it extensively. After the study, we also did a demonstration, as Joe referenced, which the abutters participated in, as well as the Office of Neighborhood Services, which showed what our study had concluded, that even the nearest abutters on their roof decks or at their closest windows would not be impacted by the level of noise that this group of people at an elevated volume would create.
And I know you see a lot of letters of support for different projects. What I would note here is, again, we're between Appleton and Gray, which are two fairly, you know, low-scale, lower-scale residential neighborhoods, so you have letters of support from people who are actually direct abutters, property owners in that area, who see this as an amenity and recognize the obvious aspect of a roof deck on a hotel that is three to four times higher than any of the buildings around it, perhaps if it's well-run.
So thank you. Hold on, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are pretty straightforward. A couple of questions. Will the food preparation be done inside in the kitchen in the hotel, or up on the rooftop?
Yeah, the idea is that it would be mostly contained to the kitchen down below and maybe some heating facilities up here, or the service would come from downstairs in the kitchen that exists for the restaurant.
Okay. And when you talked about the sound mitigation, I thought I heard you, Joe, say something about that you had some music as part of that process, but you're not planning on having it?
Not live music, we- No, live music, but there would be background, as you're out there dining, right? There would be background music. And so what we did in the demonstration is we got the monitors up there and turned up the music really loud and went down on the ground with the sound engineer and the neighbors to see what the impacts would be from everyone's properties and things like that. Obviously, we'll be operating with a much lower desk level.
So this will be, like, this will be canned music on loudspeaker?
Ambient, yeah, background music.
Ambient, better than canned, right?
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We had a long, drawn-out community process related to it, first starting back in October of 2019. They have conducted several noise studies with the neighbors. We followed up with an abutters meeting in December, where a lot of issues were hashed out, including lighting plans, screening and buffering to protect, you know, sightlines and views, hours of operation. They do have support from their neighbors. They have support from the Ellis Neighborhood Association. We do have a couple of provisos that we would like the board to consider, some of them that you have heard, which is a proviso on no live music, right? And also those specific hours, I understand they have to go before the licensing board also, but we do want to ask that there's a restriction on this level as well. And then we also worked out a communication plan. If the neighbors or abutters have any concerns about the operation as this roof deck, you know, gets going, how do issues of concern, how are they dealt with on a neighborhood level? And they have agreed to a plan around that, and we expect them to communicate regularly with neighbors as issues come up. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in support. We've spoken with neighbors in the area and have received letter of non-opposition from the Ellis Neighborhood Association, the Ellis Schools, and 11 letters of support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mine operates with the carpenters evening. We want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Do you want design review?
No, landmarks.
Landmarks. But let's do no live entertainment and till 11:00 PM during the week and midnight on weekends.
Okay.
Is there a section?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for those providers.
Calling BOA 103-0898, 189 Ipswich Street. This is site improvements to an existing lot, including drainage, paving, construction of new utility building, installation of new private duct bank. Ancillary uses needed, ancillaries to the ballpark, music venue, the back office data and digital processing, propane storage of less than 10,000 CF, fertilizer storage. Violation Article 32, Section 32-4. This is in the G-COD, conditional. Article 66, Section 14. Use regulations, there's conditional ancillary uses for a ballpark music venue and back office data digital processing, propane storage. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Lampier, Development Manager for the applicant, Jones Lang LaSalle, 1 Post Office Square, and I'm here with Kathleen Brill from Fully Hoag Council applicant.
Please explain to us what's being proposed.
So essentially, this is relocation of some functions that have occurred in what we call the Triangle Lot, immediately east and adjacent to Fenway Park. They're being relocated to 189 Ipswich Street, which is across VNS Street and south of Fenway Park. So it's a rectangular lot that's been in use since the 1940s, at least as public parking. It's primarily going to be continued as public parking, but we're moving a couple of uses over from the Triangle Lot, as I mentioned, namely, there's a data processing use that's related to broadcast TV. So we're building a small modular building, single-story, that will essentially be an IT room or data room with racks and equipment that is connected to camera locations in Fenway Park, and then when there's games, the trucks park in the lot and connect into that equipment so that the games can be broadcast.
And then off-season, is that modular moved?
The modular building will be permanent. It'll be there year-round.
And then what else is happening on this lot?
So we're actually regrading the project, partly to meet G-COD requirements, so we're raising the grade so that we can properly drain, store, and infiltrate groundwater. And then we're also going to be storing propane and fertilizer, so the propane is used for some of the outdoor concessions that occur on Jersey Street. So it's basically 20 and 30-pound containers, similar to the size you use at home, some are slightly bigger. There may be 20 or 30 of these at any one time. They're stored in metal cages that are secureable. It's well within the limits that are allowed, and it meets all NFPA requirements. It's setback from the street the proper amount.
Metal cages would be separate from the modular?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And so this would also accommodate the fertilizers in the same cages?
No, so there's a separate specially-designed shed that's eight-foot by 16-foot in dimension. It's specially-designed for storage of fertilizers. It's enclosed, it's ventilated, it has spill containment, but all the fertilizer materials are also stored in sealed containers inside of the building. And again, it's a lockable building, and it's a use that's occurred at the Triangle Lot in the past for many years.
Okay. Christian?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have the water and sewer approval letter and the engineer's no-harm certification.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter from Boston Water.
Thank you. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Straightforward.
And are you sure ways to coalesce these uses, or is there a specific reason why they have to be isolated?
So the propane, for example, is required to be stored outside. So, you know, the Red Sox, over the years, working with BFD, they specifically request and require that the propane be outside, so that's one of the reasons that needs to be located on-site.
And is there a reason why that's a modular and not a building in and of itself?
Not specifically, it's just considered a, that just seemed to be the most appropriate way to provide what's really a utility room, utility building. Single-story rectangular, low-pitched roof. We're planning to paint it Fenway green, so it blends in with the neighborhood, the environment. It should be, you know, fairly simple, appropriate-looking building for the use, I think.
Thank you.
So where, just walk me through where exactly this is. I know where the Triangle Lot is, so I know where it was, but where is it going?
I have a board to help with that. I'll try and orient you that way. So this is a photograph, you can see the park, right? Triangle Lots down here, that's where we were trucking. And this is the Swan Lot right here, this rectangular lot here. This is the River Hotel.
Okay.
And that's Boils and Street.
Okay.
CPS Guitar Center.
Okay. So you have an, so that lot has an open-air license with the city. You're going to modify that license to reduce the count of the parking in there?
Are we modifying, do we have to modify the license for parking for the reduced count?
We'll take a look at it and see if that needs to be done. We'll go through that process as well.
Yeah, you should.
But the intention is to keep this as public parking as well during the season and then off-season as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So what is the size of this modular building?
It's just under 1,000 square feet, so it's 30 by 27. So just maybe for a little more orientation, then this is the lot aligned similarly. The modular building is right here, and then we're storing fertilizer and propane up in this corner, which gives us, you know, easy access to where they need to be used.
That's a slope getting into that lot, right? It's somewhat below the-
It is a slope, and so I mentioned before, we're grading it. We actually have to increase the grade just beneath the G-COD requirement because the groundwater is relatively shallow, so we're going to create a headroom for the groundwater system. We need to do that, and of course, it also helps with the broadcast trucks. The broadcast trucks will pull in here during home scenes and games.
Okay. And there's no construction going on now? The work is from the Arts Academy that's happening on that street?
We are proceeding with some work on the site. We've gotten a temporary permit from ISD under Article 3 that allows us to continue existing use on a temporary basis while we see permanent approval.
Section 10-3.
So it's an adverse permit, basically? Pardon? It's an adverse permit? Yeah, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We continue the community process from the approved Fenway Theater project for this proposal, and no concerns were raised, arise, sorry. At this time, we have no questions and concerns. We just ask that the applicants continue working with the abutters, and we would like to go on record in support.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Emily Brown from Councilor Kenzie Box's office, and the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Mine operates with the carpenters evening. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Design review?
As for design review and screening and buffering, just because of the neighborhood and because of the uses.
And I'd just also like you to check if there's a way to make that less modular and have an actual building in there that's kind of respectful, because we see all these mods that are there, quote, temporarily, and then you see them 30 years later, you know, and it's just still a mod, you know?
Yes.
So is there-
BPDA can just look at screening, buffering, upkeep of the lot. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 101-4305, 91 Newbury Street. This is a change of art from a store to retail store with takeout, 36-day, no work to be done. Violation Article 8, Section 7, use and regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Allison DeCarlo T. Forte, 91 Newbury Street.
Tell us what you're proposing.
So we are a local retail store. We serve samples, and we're looking to just sell a cup of tea to our customers. So there's no work to be done. We just need a permit to sell a cup of tea.
So you're selling tea, any food?
No.
Okay, just plain old tea?
It's plain old tea, and there's no seating, there's no sugar, there's no milk, there's nothing like that.
This is not bubble tea, it's regular tea?
No, 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 it's regular tea.
Okay, so you have some heating system in place?
Correct. We already have it in place because we make samples every day, like for customers.
Okay. And the name of the business again?
T. Forte.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Very de minimis, but that's, in this case, appropriate.
Any questions from the board?
But you want a takeout license with this, right?
We just need to change, yeah, to, instead of retail, to retail with takeout.
Okay.
What was the former business and the space?
So we're technically, we're a retail store. So we sell tea, tea accessories, teapots, cups, et cetera. But we have a lot of customers that come in asking for tea to go, and since we were able to do it already with samples, it's just another way to increase the business.
Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have no questions or concerns with this proposal, and we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Emily Brown from Councilor Kenzie Box's office, and we, the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Elliot Laff from Neighborhood Association, Back Bay. This is an application that we think will have no negative impact on the neighborhood, so we have no opposition. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
And with the usual takeout language?
Yeah.
To this potential name?
Right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling BOA nine eight three four six eight five twenty-one East Eighth Street. This is new construction, erect a four-story multifamily eight residential unit building on a vacant lot. The violation's Article Twenty-nine, Section Four. This is the Green Belt Protection Overlay District and Article Twenty-seven S dash five, the South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, there are revised plans being distributed to the board. The changes made from the original permit application are that the building which was originally proposed as a four-story building containing nine dwelling units, ah, eight dwelling units, I'm sorry, is now a three-story building proposed to contain seven dwelling units. This is a new construction building at five twenty-one East Eighth Street in South Boston. As I said, the proposal is for seven units. There would be one three-bedroom unit of fifteen hundred fifty-eight square feet, four one-bedroom units ranging from nine hundred thirty-two to one thousand nineteen square feet, and two two-bedroom units ranging from nine hundred ninety-one to one thousand nineteen square feet. Eight off-street parking spaces are required, nine spaces are being provided. This is a lot that slopes down, enabling some of the parking to be accommodated at the rear of the site beneath the building, and the others against the rear lot line where there's actually currently a garage. Those parking spaces would be arrayed where the present garage is. In terms of the zoning refuse letter, this matter was cited for Green Belt Protection Overlay District and South Boston iPod applicability. The iPod, of course, expired October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Three-story building, this would rise thirty feet four inches. The FAR would be one point three-three.
So, your only violations are, is basically G., Green Belt Protection Overlay District?
Which is not a violation.
It's just a citation?
It's green belt compatibility or green belt applicability. The green belt roadway in this case is Day Boulevard.
Yeah.
The building is on East Eighth Street. It does not touch Day Boulevard, and there is no impact on Day Boulevard from either the building or the parking use.
But it's within X number of feet from the center line of Day Boulevard?
It's within, the G-Pod is within five hundred feet of the center line of Day Boulevard.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I'm good.
Um, there's no roof deck proposed on this?
No roof deck. There are rear balconies, and there's inset side balconies. The balconies can be seen if you go to sheet A one point, I'm sorry, A one zero one, which are the second and third floor elevations. You see the rear balconies attendant to the units three, four, six, and seven, and then units two and five have the very small inset balconies.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. The first abutters meeting, there was tons of opposition. He worked with the abutters at the second abutters meeting. He still worked on a couple of concerns. At the third one, not a lot of people showed up, and there were no more concerns. And then he also met with the director abutter who goes away to Florida for the winter, so he took time out of the two days to meet with him, and he, all of his concerns were addressed. So, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. There was significant neighborhood opposition at the first abutters meeting. We recently spoken with neighbors in the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who indicated that seven units is too dense and out of character with the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I am an abutter, and my question is, is whether or not this has been changed back to a three-story or if it's still a four-story, because the notice we received said it's a four-story.
The attorney for the applicant put on the record that this is now a three-story multifamily, seven units.
Okay.
So, in response to your question, did you have any comment in opposition?
Ma'am, could you just put your name and address? You didn't say what it was.
Kathleen Kelly, fourteen ninety-four Columbia Road. I'm an abutter in the rear.
Thank you.
And I would have a concern over the height looking into my property and my building, my house.
Anybody else in opposition?
Hi, my name is Grace Kinnahan. I'm an abutter as well.
Can you speak up, please?
Sorry. Hi, Madam Chairwoman, my name is Grace Kinnahan. I am an abutter as well. My address is one nine seven I Street, and I have concerns that, of the height of the building, the fact that it blocks our light, the noise, that it's out of character for the neighborhood. We weren't informed either of the abutters meetings or of this meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, councilor, I just want to clarify, because I think when projects come to us that a G-Cod, I mean, a G-Pod, excuse me, there is, this building, as I look at the dimensional requirements and as at the use table, this is all, meets all the standards, all the zoning requirements. The only trigger is the Green Belt Protection Overlay District, and this is not a project that directly abuts the said Green Belt Protection Overlay District, Green Belt Protection roadway, which is Day Boulevard.
That is all correct.
That is all correct. So, for all, for every violation, this clearly meets the zoning requirements from, as far as ISD is concerned.
It's zoning compliant and G-Pod, as the board knows, is side plane review only.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved pending BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case, the nine thirty, calling BOA nine nine five nine four nine two twenty-four M Street. This is constructing new roof deck, composite decking, cable guardrail, and an access through a existing roof hatch. The violation's Article sixty-eight, Section Eight. The side yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Jeffrey Hubbard, two twenty-four M Street, Unit Three, property owner, joined by my wife, Margot Hubbard.
Is it possible it's being proposed?
So, within our third-floor unit, we have an exclusive-use internal staircase leading to the roof, which is accessed through a hatch. The placement of this hatch is against the party wall of the abutting property, causing a pre-existing side zoning variance, of which we're seeking relief.
So, hold on. So, this is accessed by a hatch. How old is this building?
It was renovated in twenty seventeen. We purchased the property in twenty eighteen.
Renovated in twenty seventeen, and did it need action by this board?
Excuse me?
Did that project come to this board for approval?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, there is no restriction on a hatch or anything up there, a roof deck up there, as far as you know?
As far as I know, in public permits that I've been able to access, no, there's no violation, and all was compliant.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I'm good.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody, oh?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We know that the abutters, some of them are in opposition, and the City Point Neighborhood Association doesn't want to set a precedence for the roof deck, but based on the variances that they're requesting, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please give us new information. Representatives from elected officials, speak first.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. We spoken with neighbors and abutters in the area who have shared concerns about the precedent this will set with a lack of existing decks in the area, as well as privacy, noise, and quality of life issues. Please note the City Point Neighborhood Association has sent an opposition letter, and they vote amongst abutters who are in opposition. We also received a petition of fifty-one signatures in opposition and two letters of opposition from abutters. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office, and we echo Councilor Flynn's office, and we'd like to go on record of opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board, Luanne O'Connor, Vice Chair, City Point Neighborhood Association.
So, you know the drill. Tell us, don't read to us, tell us what the opposition, tell us what the opposition is based on.
Okay, well, I'd first like to say that the fifty-one signatures are in fact direct abutters and abutters. We did not go outside of the triangulated area. We, the abutters meeting was presented, it was voted unanimously amongst the director abutters not to approve or support the project. We then took a second vote within the association, and again, it was unanimous not to support the roof deck. Reason being, now, at this point, this, there are no roof decks within this area. This is the area where the iPod was actually created, at two oh two M Street. This house is directly across from there. There, it's all two families. There are in fact six triple-decker bricks.
So, tell us, please tell us about the roof deck. That's all I'm really concerned about.
There are, there are no roof decks in this area. On Columbia Road, there are homes where the backs back up to this particular property. That's going to cause lack of privacy. You'll be able to see into these people's homes. The demographic for this area, Madam Chair, is over forty, and we also have seniors in this particular area. So, this isn't the type of area that would support roof decks, because there are, you know, no roof decks in this area.
Thank you.
So, we don't want to set that precedent. We want to keep our quality of life as it is and support our seniors from going into privacy issues.
Thank you. Um, given a response, please.
Yes, just to go on record, at the CPNA meeting that we did attend in December, there was no ID check or address validation. We have no idea who was a true abutter and who was just voting on behalf of the neighborhood. I did provide an exhibit in terms of the privacy.
Will you guys please put your name and address on the record and give us new information?
Sure. Debbie Markarian, I'm representing Sixth Hardy Street, South Boston, as well as Two Thirty M Street, South Boston, and we are in opposition of this roof deck, and we're direct abutters.
Thank you.
Silva Markarian, I live in Columbia Road, which is directly behind my house, and looking the deck, which is interrupt my privacy. I'm not happy, I'm against it.
Tom Markarian, two nineteen M Street, adjacent three-story structure against the deck.
Ellen Duffley, nine Hardy Street.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, Ellen Duffley, nine Hardy Street. And I'm in opposition to the deck because of the lack of privacy, the location, the proximity to our bedroom windows, um...
I think that's been covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I note that a simple Zillow search of the CPNA neighborhood shows sixty-five properties with roof decks in the neighborhood, so I don't think this is any new precedent being set.
And I, and this board has always maintained that this, the projects we look at, we look at on a case-by-case basis, and we're not precedent-setting in any way. Any additional information you want to put on the record?
We did share Exhibit A, some of the abutters sharing concerns. We have an existing porch at the moment where we have direct line of sight into these abutters kitchens, and I've taken a photo from the roof that I think we'd actually both avail for more privacy, given the setback from the rear property line.
So, you're pulling it back from the rear property line, centering more, if more, onto the, onto the, onto the property?
Correct, and we're one of the only flat tops in the neighborhood. Most are other, are peaked views, so we're not impeding anyone else's view.
Okay.
Given the minor variance, we appreciate the consideration of the board and yourself, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
We're gonna take, oh, let's just find out for deferrals, and then we'll take a five-minute break.
Yes, I'm gonna call the ten thirties. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty?
Uh, yes.
This is deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty only.
Uh, it's thirty-six Maury Road, West Rock Creek.
Hold on a second.
You're gonna defer it? Ah, I wanna defer it.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA one zero zero six three three two thirty-six Maury Road. Name and address for the record, please.
James Barry Shields.
Could you hold on a second, please? Could you take your conversations outside, please? Could you take your conversations outside, please?
Oh.
Appreciate it. Name and address for the record, please.
James Barry Shields, thirty-six Maury Road, West Rock Creek, Mass. Oh, two one three two.
So, tell us, you're requesting a deferral?
I'm requesting a deferral, uh, I, um...
For what reason?
My proposal was to build a twenty-three-hundred square, add an addition to make the house. It's eleven-hundred-square-foot house. Wanted to add square footage to make it about twenty-three, which would be two fifty over the FAR. It came out where my architect basically has a finished basement, which is pushing me up to twenty-eight eleven, which...
So, tell me why you need the deferral?
So, my deferral is to basically, we've got three violations. My deferral is to go back to plan examiner to offset the three violations.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think if it needs to be re-advertized, it needs a little time, right?
It's, it's the, 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 the,
The Board of Appeal is back in session. This is for Tuesday, February fourth. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off and all conversations. There's been a lot of improvements to this room, but we are still distracted by the conversations in the rear of the room, so please make sure all those conversations happen outside. In conformance with the open-meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. When you have a chance at the podium, this is your opportunity to give us new information. We are fact-finding, so use your, your, your opportunity to give us new information. If somebody has already stated the reason for either your support or your opposition, put your name on the record and let us, and just let us, and let us know that your, your concern has already been stated. So, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call deferrals again or withdrawals, in case somebody was outside. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? Hearing them, we'll call the first case, calling BOA 1023609, seventy-five to eighty-one Dudley Street. This is a four-story, twenty-unit affordable condo building with seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, retail use is forbidden. Article fifty, Section twenty-eight, multifamily use is forbidden. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the height exceeded. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, insufficient usable open space per unit. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, insufficient backyard setback. Article fifty, Section forty-one, residential abutting in industrial sub-district, none is provided. Article fifty, Section forty-three, insufficient parking. Article fifty, Section forty-three, insufficient parking for residential. Article fifty, Section forty-three, loading bay. Article fifty, Section forty-four, special provisions for corner lots. Article fifty, Section forty-four, traffic visibility across the corner. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, board members, good morning. Timothy Fraser, Mackenzie and Associates, one-eighty-three State Street, Boston. To my right is Megan Regan, from Madison Park Development Corporation, project manager, that is the designated developer. Further to my right is Sarah Kudra, from Dream, Dream Architects.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So this is the twenty-unit new construction, four stories of affordable housing condominium ownership project.
Is this the RFP that was issued not so long ago?
This is in response to the DND's RFP, that actually requested retail on the first floor and at least two-thirds of affordable housing, which we're at one-hundred percent. The site is a city-owned property, of course, but we also are combining two adjacent, portions of two adjacent parcels that are also controlled by the developer, and that's what kind of creates a unique size of the lot, but also causes the lots to be in kind of two different zoning districts, to the three of fours to thousand, and it's also in the Dudley Square EDA.
So this is abutting the building that's currently being constructed?
That's correct.
How large is the slot size?
The slot size is seven thousand square feet, I believe, total, seventy-seven ninety-four.
Seventy-seven ninety-four? Okay, and so there's four stories, twenty-four units. Tell us the breakdown.
Twenty units.
Twenty units?
Yep, and the breakdown is one bedroom, one bath. There are six, two-bedroom, two-bath, there are eleven, and three-bedroom, two-bath, there are three, for a total of twenty.
Three, and can you tell us the unit sizes?
The one bedrooms are approximately six-seventy-six square feet. The two bedrooms are approximately eight-twenty-seven square feet, and the three bedrooms are one-thousand forty-eight.
One-thousand forty-eight square feet?
Yes.
Okay, is there a roof deck proposed with this?
Uh, no roof deck proposed.
No? So the, let's see, there's a lot of violations. So the FAR stories, rear yard. Can you tell us about parking and loading? Because I'm assuming that this loading also refers to the commercial space?
Yeah, it refers primarily to the commercial space. So with respect to the parking, we did bring this proposal to the community and to the BPDA as a no-parking project. That's part of the RFP's guidelines to have it transit-oriented. So we're about, you know, half a block, I think, or point-one miles away from the Dudley Square T Station. So we are using that as well as for the loading portion that does relate to the commercial space, but with seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet, the loading capacity, we feel, is pretty much adequate for using the rear doors and bays rather than having a full loading, loading dock and deck.
Now what I'm concerned about is that that's an interesting corner right there, and you know, with the Dunkin' Donuts, you know, they have ability to off-load off-site, I mean onsite, but if there is a similar use like that, similar commercial use, is that going to cause continued traffic issues right there? And that's my only concern with that loading requirement.
Okay. Right now, and I know that we're probably just in preliminary discussions, but we're looking at kind of smaller, more service-type businesses as opposed to a restaurant or retail use in that area.
How large is that Dunkin' space?
I don't know how large.
I'm the project manager for Madison Park. You are, you don't, you don't know?
That's not a Madison Park project.
I know, I know, but no sense, okay. Okay. And traffic visibility around the corner, what's causing that?
I'll tee that up for the, for the architects, but basically the violation is that because it's on a, on a corner, you have two front yard setbacks as opposed to a front and a side, right? Because it's a corner lot, you're using two front yard setbacks, and so the requirements that exist is we're all kicking over to, I think, you have a thirty-foot visibility line across the intersection?
Yeah. It was simply an insufficient square footage remaining when you took all those setbacks into consideration, and that's the cause of violation.
So I think that the visibility requires that there can't be any obstruction, three feet across. What's causing this particular violation for the corner visibility is actually an awning that protrudes, it's far higher than the line of sight where you'd be in driving traffic.
How high is that awning?
It'd be about ten feet off of the sidewalk at that elevation.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Lick?
The drawings are adequate, but I have a question. Have you selected a contractor for the project?
No, not yet.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is that Madison Park in history is used, and I would characterize as irresponsible contractors, and I hope that if approved, you will reflect community standards on the project.
Of course.
Is there a rendering? Do you have what this building will look like?
So the, what we're looking at is the building under construction here on the left and the proposal on the right.
Yeah, so the building on the left is the current, and that's on the right.
And this is the proposed, that we're talking about, yes.
And where's the commercial space on this?
Yes, can you, it's, it's right on the corner of the lot.
And where's the awning, that, that ten feet off?
This little thing that says shop here, yeah.
Oh.
Just a very narrow...
So that can be eliminated essentially to improve that sight distance, because people are coming down the hill there.
If it is seen to be a difficulty, that it could be altered.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Whoever's gonna speak in proposal, in support, please line up. Representatives of elected officials first, neighborhood residents, and everybody else next. Anybody in opposition, be ready to pop up, too.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Seventy-five Dudley Street sets to create twenty units of much-needed affordable homeownership opportunities in the area. Developers held a robust community process and was able to get necessary feedback for a project that will fit well in the community. Having said that, we'd like to go on record in support of the proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pratik Dubey from the Office of Council President, Kim Janey. Given Madison Park's solid track record with similar homeownership projects, as well as the fact that they've invested resources towards bettering other properties in and around Nubian Square, the Council President would like to go on record in support of the project.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, David Orini, on behalf of City Councilor-at-large, Michelle Wu, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jacob de Bleecourt, and I am with the Office of City Councilor-at-large, Julia Mahia. We would like to go on record as in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Joe Backer. I am a development officer with the Department of Neighborhood Development. We've been working with Madison Park as they responded to our request for proposals, and this will be utilizing city-owned land to build income-restricted homeownership units, so we are in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ebony DeRosa, and on behalf of the BPDA, I just want to say that we are in support of the project.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? I think this calls for significant BPDA design review, and just a note for, for construction workers and businesses that support living wages.
Yeah, and just...
So you're gonna make your motion?
I will, just, I just want to say, on the record, you guys are, you guys are a development company, it would be nice to have more information provided to the board, some handouts, stuff like that, to actually see this stuff going through. So if you come back with projects, especially of this scope, if you could have some handouts for us, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to make a motion to approve a BPDA design review and reflect some of the standards of Nubian, Nubian Square and the standards of the community over there.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 992-973-25-MCBRIDE STREET. There's a companion case, BOA 992-974-25-MCBRIDE STREET. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family in retail store to a three-family dwelling that was in existing condition for many years, no work to be done. The violation is Article fifty-five, Section forty, off-street parking and loading requirements, Article fifty-five, Section nine, dimensional regulation fifty-five point nine point three, the location of the main entrance. Article fifty-five, Section nine, additional lot area is insufficient. And Article fifty-five, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. There is building code. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family retail to a three-family. The building code is the ninth edition, seven-eighty CMR, nine-zero-three-point-two, occupancy, automatic sprinkler requirement, the ninth edition, nine-seventy, seven-eighty CMR, one-zero-zero-six, the number of exits and exit access doorways. Unit three only has one means of egress. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way. Madam Chair, we are seeking both building code and zoning code relief.
So please speak to the building code relief first.
First, in reference to the number of exits, they do conform, all three units have two means of egress, we are not seeking relief for exits.
So tell us, tell us on Plan A1, can you walk through the exits for us on all the units?
Madam Chair, I did not retain a copy of the plans that I...
I'm looking, I, I, I am confused, I have to say, when I looked at the plans preview, because in the advertisement it says that Unit Three only has one means of egress, but on the plans it says it has two.
Yes. No, we were cited, the plan examiner cited us for not having a second means of egress for Unit Three. We filed a, a second plan with the building examiner. He did not issue a revised building code violation.
Okay, so, so the plans that I am looking at would show a second means of egress, were subsequent to that citation?
Yes, and it is the second and third unit share joint means of egress. So Unit Two has an independent egress, and Unit Three has an independent egress plus a joint egress.
So you do not need the relief?
Correct.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to deny building code relief. Second.
I am seeking relief for the sprinkler system.
Oh.
So you're still seeking relief for the sprinkler system?
Yes. The building was, was originally an oil burner retail store. The company moved out in nineteen-ninety to Natick, and the store was converted back in nineteen-ninety to a unit, a dwelling unit, a one-bedroom dwelling unit. The egress, the front egress faces the street. The egress, the front egress faces the street, and the rear egress is to the rear of the building. That's the.
Just tell us why you're speaking relief from the sprinkler, because the, if it was converted in 90, it essentially, and it wasn't legalized then, you're coming to legalize now, so it means you need to meet the building code as it, as it is now.
Yes, and Madam Chair, I've laid out the international building code section in my submittal on the memorandum for building code relief, and it states that if the means, existing means of egress are not increased, and if the work area is not greater than 50%, and the workload of the new egress does not have a load of 30, and this is a one-bedroom unit, so obviously it does not have an egress load of 30, it does not trigger the need for a sprinkler system. It's like, I cited.
But if it's going from a store and two units to three units.
Correct.
That's what triggers the sprinkler, not the fact that it's not just on that particular unit base, it's on the entire building base.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that the code talks about converting and changing egress. If I am changing the use from a retail commercial to a residential, and if the means of egress for the new unit does not burden the existing means of egress, and is not greater than 50% of the building, it is not required by the code which I lay out in detail.
Madam Chair, if I might.
No, because I don't think I see that information, but go ahead. Go ahead.
What the applicant, what the applicant is suggesting is that he interprets the code differently than the billing examiner. And I actually don't think that, if he's had an issue with the code interpretation, that's not with this board. And given that they've solved the problems of means of egress, I would simply make a motion to deny all building code relief, and you can work it out with, with the ISD.
So is there a second?
I'll second on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to the, to the, to the building itself.
Yes. The locust is a single-family 5,000 sub-district in the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood District. The proposed new unit entranceway faces the street. The existing two units face the side yard but are visible from the street.
How's, how large is this unit, this first-floor unit?
The first-floor unit is 623 square feet, is a one-bedroom. The second-floor unit is 1,374 square feet, is a three-bedroom. And the third unit is 950 square feet, a one-bedroom.
Okay.
The lot area by code for three units requires 7,000 square feet. The existing condition is 4,000 square feet. Open space for three units is 1,750 square feet. The existing is 240 square feet. In reference to parking, the additional unit would require one parking space. There is a two-car garage plus two tandem parking spaces for a total of six spaces on the lot. Respectfully suggests there is no parking violation. The Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Associate.
Okay, now, hold on, hold on. How are the plans?
The drawings are, with the addition of the second means of egress, the drawings are fine.
Has this building been paying taxes as a two or a three?
As a three.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Lizzy Santiana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had successful abutters meeting and community process. There were no concerns. They received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The Mayor, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Justin McClair from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savi George's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and of course, it's with no building code relief.
Thank you. Calling BOA 103-6406, 251 Bowden Street. This is a change of occupancy from adult education computer training lab to a restaurant with takeout. The violation is Article 65, Section 15. Restaurant with takeout is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
You name an address for the record, sir.
251 Bowden Street, Dorchester, Mass.
What's your name?
Jean-Luc Debarros.
Okay, and tell us what you're proposing?
Yeah, it's a takeout restaurant where you can do shawarma, thing like that.
And what's the name of the restaurant?
It's gonna be Plateau Shawarma.
Plateau what?
Shawarma.
Okay, schwama, okay. Okay, and have you run a takeout restaurant before?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay.
But.
Okay. How are the plans?
The drawings are all right.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Facee Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. They also have support from the Main Streets District in that area. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
How you doing? I'm not sure the process works, but we just have a question of where he's gonna put the trash. Where, where are directly.
We, we are here to take testimony in support or in opposition. Is your, are you in support or in opposition?
Well, opposition depending on where he's gonna put the trash. That's our concern, because we are the neighbor directly behind him.
Okay, thank you. And you name an address, please?
It's gonna be.
164.
No, it's gonna be Kathy Ayala, 164 Hamilton Street.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here to oppose because a mister, he don't have the little space that we have. It's been like four years, full of trash, and I don't see where he's gonna put his trash. If, if you give him a permission to do it, I'm gonna face my side, because I'm not gonna put up with this anymore.
Okay, so it's been going on for a while?
For four years.
Okay.
And you should see how it is.
Okay.
I don't have enough fire exit to get out of my house.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Carl Jean Lewis on behalf of Councilor Campbell. We'd like to go on record asking for a deferral. Our reasoning being is that we don't believe there was a full community process that was held. Two of the civic associations within that area were not notified of this project and saw no plans or given, given any information. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like you have an issue here.
No, I have, I have the, I have the galera that have the, for the Main Street.
Okay, let's, let's get a motion for deferral, because the other option is denial, and you need to deal with your trash issue. So may I have a motion for deferral, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
March 24th at 11:30.
Okay. We need, we need you to come back, and all the issues with your abutter needs to be addressed.
What's the, the issue is the?
You talk to them at the back of the room, but it's, we'll see you on March 24th at 11:30, and if this is gonna go forward, we need those issues addressed, okay?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-0026, 350 to 352 Galivan Boulevard. This is intended, application is intended to revive an expired permit to install a driveway and curb cut for two parking spots. This is an existing three-family. Proposed driveway is located on the side of the house, fronting Magdalia Street, which is a one-way heading to Galivan Boulevard. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use, three-family occupancy in a two-family sub-district. Name and address for the record. The permit expired in 2005?
It expired, and then it, it was renewed in 2008, I think, and then it expired after that. It was initially brought.
You've owned that house since then?
It's condos.
It's condos?
Yes.
And, so, so why don't we backtrack? Because we have to look at this as a fresh proposal.
Okay.
Because I think for the most part, most members were not here. So tell us what you're proposing to do.
Just reinstate an expired permit. When the condo association was done in 2005, switched from a three-family to three condos, the permit was granted, the plans were approved, and due to lack of money, the condo association didn't have the money to finish the second driveway.
So tell us, is that two driveways on the property or one driveway?
Two driveways.
And is there parking on that side of the street, on Magdal, on, on that side of the street?
The, there is parking on the Galvin, there's a driveway that was existing when it was a three-family on the Galvin side, and this is to create one on the Magdala side.
And is there parking on that side of the street on Magdala?
People talk about the street, is that what you mean?
I just want to know whether you'll be taking off, taking a space off the street to create the driveway.
Well, we will not be losing a space. It will be adding two spaces to the driveway, so it would be taking one space but adding two onto the property.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, that's what they show. There'd be a net gain of one, one space, because as the applicant suggests, the, the two, two spaces off, one curb cut that would eliminate one space and two instead. On the existing driveway, on these plans, it doesn't show, how many cars park in the existing driveway?
Four.
Four.
On Galvin Boulevard.
On Galvin, so between, so you'd have six total, right?
Correct, for three units.
It's, it is tandem parking, but it's in the rear, so it's, it's okay.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. There were some initial concerns from the neighborhood that this would take away a visitor spot, but we're working with Boston Transportation to fix the signage in the area. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-78434, Payne Street. This is a direct, a new three-and-a-half-story, six-family building and combined lot with open-air parking garage with nine parking spaces. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, and the MFR is forbidden use in a 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9.2, Dimensional Regulation, location of the main entrance, some of the unit's main entrances do not face the front lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. With me to my right is the project proponent, Mark Savatsky, and to my far right, Peter Venko is the project architect.
Just for the record, Mr. Rujurio has recused himself, so you will need five, five concurring votes.
Understood.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Madam Chair, this is a proposal to combine three existing lots of land on Payne Street in Dorchester, which is a private way that dead-ends on McMorro Playground. The existing structure, the single-family structure and the garage will be raised, and a new, from the ground up, construction building containing six units with parking for nine vehicles will be constructed.
So to give us details.
Details. There are six units, four are two-bedroom units, and two are three-bedroom units. The units range in size from 1,140 square feet on the small end to the larger units 1724 square feet.
Okay, and then you have quite a number of violations. Can you walk through them, please?
Yes. The first issue is a use violation. This is a 2F 5,000 sub-district. The proposal for six units is a multifamily residential use, so we require variance for that. Next item is the floor area ratio. The maximum allowed in this sub-district is .5. The proposed FAR is 1.55.
And what's the proposed?
1.55.
Okay, go ahead.
Next item, there are two items related to height. The maximum in this sub-district is two-and-a-half stories and 35 feet. The proposal is for three-and-a-half stories and 45 feet, six inches. Next item is the front yard setback. There is a violation that's been cited in the record, but the front yard is being aligned for modal alignment, and it's a private way where the unique condition is that there is a sufficient front yard area that's essentially landscaped as part of the private way. Next item is insufficient side yard. So the building slopes down Payne Street, and in response to some of the concerns raised at the abutter meeting and the community meeting, the building was pushed all the way down to the end of Payne Street, abutting McMorro Playground, such that we were able to increase the side yard setback from the closest building, which fronts up at the top of the hill to 27 feet. So that's more than sufficient, but our side yard violation relates to the other end of the building as it abuts the playground, so it's, it's almost a zero side yard, but we're on the edge of the park, and there's no residential structures there. Next item is the rear yard setback required is 30 feet. This is a fairly narrow lot in terms of its configuration, even with the combination of the three lots. The rear yard setback at its shortest point is, Peter? What's the rear yard at the shortest?
Uh, shortest point is about four feet.
About four feet, but it does get larger, again, as it slopes down the hill toward the playground.
And so you're just using essentially a public amenity to meet your, your requirements in a certain way? You know, just bringing it that close to a public park?
On, on the side yard, yeah, but that was in response to the community's request to move the building down to create the maximum possible side yard with the building further up the hill.
I'm looking at your first cover. Does that look to me like that's parking in the front yard?
No, so the yellow building is not the subject of this application. Madam Chair, the, the blue building a little further down behind the yellow building is the proposal. We just, that, that's just a rendering to set it in context. So where the person is standing with the dog, that's Payne Street, so going down the hill to the right is the new structure. The yellow structure is an existing.
It's an existing condition, and somebody's parking in their front yard?
Yeah, that's on Houghton Street.
Okay.
Yeah. Our parking is fully contained within the garage. Below the, the new structure, there are nine parking spaces, which more than exceeds the required ratio. If you look at the aerial view of the site plan, you can see the, the three lots abutting the playground. There's lots of trees on that end of the property, and again, the, the desire was to have the maximum distance between the house on the corner of Houghton and Payne and the new structure, which also opens up the view shed from the building behind, where it currently looks into the rear of the single-family house. That'll be open space.
And those trees are on the playground?
They are, and those all remain. Also, there's a sheet with a landscape plan to show the landscaping proposal for the side yard behind the building on Houghton Street, site plan of the garage parking spaces, typical floor plans for the units. And lastly, Madam Chair, there was a citation for location of main entrances not on front lot line. Again, because of the slope of the land and accessibility requirements, on one of the last sheets, there's a, an elevation which shows the slope of the land. The walkway to the front of the building then leads to a common corridor, which then provides direct handicap access, excuse me, for four of the units, in light of the grade change, and that's the reason for the location of the main entrance not being on the front lot line.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine. I, I was also gonna suggest that a rendering not highlight a building that's not part of the project, but the drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through a robust community process, including two Mayor's Office-sponsored abutters meetings regarding the property, and they also met with the Pope's Hill Civic Association. We'd like to go on record in full support of this proposal. What would you ask for design review at this time?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi Georgia's office, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, may I submit letters of support to the record? Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-3581, 45 Oak Street. Oak Street here. This is a change of occupancy from a two-to-three family, no work to be done, the violation Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 69, Section 8, a three-family dwelling is forbidden. And Article 69, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Janmi Rodriguez, 45 Oak Street, Hyde Park.
Tell us what you're proposing to do?
It's just legalize to a three-fam, from two to a three-family.
And where's that additional unit, in the attic or in the basement?
In the attic.
In the attic? Okay, tell us how many square feet and the floor-to-ceiling height?
It's height, the ceiling is height.
How many, how many feet?
I don't know.
Mr. Olick, does the plans, do the plans indicate what the floor-to-ceiling height?
The plans do not indicate what the ceiling height is.
How many square feet will the unit be? Will it be a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom?
It's two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom? Okay.
Do you know the square footage of the unit? How big it will be?
The dimensions, there aren't dimensions on the drawings, I mean, I'd have to have the, well, I do have a ruler over here, I mean, this is a relatively minor.
It's used, it used to be a three-family before?
Are you paying taxes as a three-family?
Yes.
Okay, and the second means of egress, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, no, the egress issue is fine, it's two bedrooms.
Okay, and it looks like it's, like it's decent size?
Yeah, yeah, and there are no elevations, so it's a little hard to, it's just floor plans.
And is that a picture, a picture?
It's like a mantan?
Oh, man, sorry, okay.
Your architect's not here?
No.
Live in the house?
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park, and a abutters meeting was held on December 13th, and there was no opposition from the community since then, our offices received no phone calls or emails in opposition, so we want to go on record in support of it. Thank you.
Do you have any sense of the dimensions of that, that space?
I would, honestly, I don't totally recall right now, but I believe we do have the plans, you know, I have it in email, so I could probably forward that to you if need be.
Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have, so may I have a decision?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that's with no building code?
No building code, yeah.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 102-554579, Moss Hill Road. This is an existing single-story wood structure over concrete walkout basement and garage, it's an addition of wood frame level above, footprint remains the same. Violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, side yard is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith, KDS Law, business address at 359 Newbury Street in Boston, to my immediate right is the project architect, two seats to my right is the owner and proponent.
Please, tell us what's being proposed?
Madam Chair, presently on site is a single-family home, the intent is to raise the structure down to the foundation and then build vertically back up again with two stories.
Okay, so how many square, how many square feet is that altogether with the addition?
The total proposed structure will have 2,243 square feet of space, a proposed FAR of .355.
Sorry, what's the required FAR and what are you proposing?
Permitted FAR is .3, the proposed FAR is .355.
Okay.
We believe we'll have a net increase in livable square feet in the structure after construction's completed of only approximately 500 square feet. If you look at page four of the diagrams in front of you, you'll see a good breakdown for current FAR versus proposed.
Okay, so your side, your side yard, so your front yard insufficiency is because it's existing?
Yes.
How about the side yard insufficiency?
Madam Chair, the proposed footprint, the actual livable first floor has some bump outs over the foundation, the intent is to remove those and build vertically over the foundation, will actually reduce the violations, the current pre-existing violations, but to answer your question, Madam Chair, they are pre-existing.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are all right.
Yeah? Is anybody here to, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Lindsay Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the applicants met with their abutters multiple times to address concerns, they have received the support from both Jamaica Hills Association and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin McClair from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
I was just going to mention, it does seem that it's a bit out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, so.
The design.
The design, so I would be a favorite with very strict BPDA review, that it fits into the character of the neighborhood.
Sure, and Madam Chair, may I just comment?
It's, so that's in the record? Approval with significant BPDA design review, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-9770, 7-9 Wenham Street. This is a change from a two to a three-family in existing condition, the violation is Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quintian Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, in Boston, with me to my immediate right is Eric Shinrock from the applicant, and to my far right Derek Rubenoff, who's the architect on the project. 7-9 Wenham Street is located in Jamaica Plain, off of Hyde Park Avenue, near the Forest Hills MBTA station. The proposal is simply to convert the legal use and occupancy of this existing building from a two-family to a three-family dwelling in order to legalize an existing third unit in the building.
Which is the third unit? That's proposed to be legalized.
There's three existing units, one on each floor, it's a floor through.
I see that, but you know, we need to just know which is the one that you're proposing to legalize.
I would assume the third floor. It's the third floor.
It's the third floor?
Yes, ma'am. It's a long-time existing condition, the property's assessed as a three-family, somehow it's zoned as a two-family, you can see from the handout that we provided, it's a, existing conditions show it's a traditional JP triple-decker, it's been assessed as a three-family since at least 1985, there's three gas meters with national grid, which you can see photos of, there's three.
Does the third unit go up into the attic space? No.
Does not.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board?
So currently, there's no public meter?
No, there's no, there's no public meter.
Is there plans to put that in the attic?
Yes.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Lindsay Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the applicant had had a successful community process, received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin McClair from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi Georgia's office, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, mine are Perez with the carpenters, she didn't want to go on record in support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for bringing us an easy project today.
Calling BOA 101-4352, 59 Chelman Street. This is demolishing existing property and erecting a new two-family duplex, the violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 7, a two-family dwelling is forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Johanna Schneider with the law firm of Hemmen Way and Barre, 75 State Street, Boston, I'm here with Pamela Barty, the developer. What we're proposing to do is to demolish the existing single-family structure at 59 Chelman Street, the structure is single-family detached two-car garage built in the 1950s, it's a single-level ranch-style building, if you can see from the photos that we've just handed up to you, it is suffering from extreme deferred maintenance, and the property is kind of a mess. What Ms. Barty is proposing to do is to replace this structure with a two-family townhouse.
How long has this owner owned this property?
Over 40 years.
She has the property under agreement currently, and the current owner, I think, has owned it since the 1950s, and so it is a property that is clearly in need of some care, she is proposing to remove the existing structure, obviously clean up the property, and she wants to replace it with a two-family townhouse-style duplex. Each unit will be a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, they'll each have approximately 1,600 square feet, each one will have a garage space and one driveway space. The units will be owner-occupied, they'll be condominium units, right now, Ms. Barty's intent is for her to reside in one and her parents to reside in the other. I want to point out that the lot is located on the corner of the VFW Parkway and Chelman Street, and the project really has been designed so that, you know, it's a corner lot and it's trying to mesh the architectural styles of both Chelman and VFW Parkway. I do want to also point out that VFW Parkway within a quarter-mile radius of this site does have more than 20 duplex townhomes right in the immediate vicinity. The relief that we're looking for is as follows, with respect to use, this is a 1F-5,000, 6,000 zoning district, so we do need relief to have the two-family use here. We do require relief with respect to FAR, the required FAR is .4, we just need a little bit of relief with respect to that, the proposed FAR is .48. With respect to the rear yard, the required is 30, what's being provided or proposed is 14.5, and with respect to front yard, it's a 20-yard, 20-foot front yard setback, and we're providing 16. I do want to note that the existing structure has pre-existing non-conforming yards, front and rear, and we are actually improving those conditions, the current rear yard is 9.3 and the current front yard is 13. We do have.
And how large is this lot?
It is 7,361, I believe.
7,361?
7,681, I apologize.
681?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any additional information about the project itself?
About the project itself? No, I would note that with respect to the variances that we're seeking, they are largely driven by the fact that this is a very wide but very narrow lot, and I did want to mention that there has been extensive neighborhood outreach.
We'll hear about that later, you're here to give us about this, to tell us about the zoning, so this will require one curb cut because you're having adjacent garages, and did you tell us how large each unit is proposed?
About 1,600 square feet.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate, so for the existing garage, there is an existing curb cut?
There is an existing curb cut, it's a two-car garage.
So you would move the curb cut?
I would move the curb cut, yes.
And turn the existing one to a spreader sidewalk?
Exactly.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, hold on, I think we have, I'd like to hear from three people who are not representatives of elected officials, please, so whoever is left, please make sure that somebody knows what your concern is. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jack Doug in Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, just like to go on record in opposition. We held an abutters meeting back in November, about 15 or so neighbors came, and the majority were in opposition, the applicant that went before the West Rock Street Neighborhood Council in December and received a vote of five to zero in opposition. Pam did work with the community, she does have some support of the neighbors, including a directive abutter, but we feel overall the community is, you know, opposed to this project, so we'd like to reiterate that. Thank you.
What is the basis for the opposition?
The main concern from the neighbors was the density, essentially, they would like to see a single-family and not a duplex.
It's essentially non-contextual because the other, other buildings are on Baker Street or, you know, but not on Chelman or those side streets. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, the council would like to also go on record in opposition of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. So three representatives from the community, you name and address.
Daphne Minner, 76 Lyle Street, and we are one of the abutting properties, and we would like to oppose this on the grounds that all of the variances that are requested, there is not a foundation in our neighborhood for needing these kinds of exceptions, a single-family house would fit on this lot, there are two, there are actually three other adjoining lots that are right along the VFW Parkway, all of the homes are oriented towards the VFW Parkway, if this, if this property were to be oriented towards the VFW Parkway like the others, the variances would not be required. All the other homes in the vicinity, in basically the immediate vicinity of three or four blocks, are single-family homes, the only other duplexes are, were built in the 40s, so there are no new duplexes having been built. So we are in rejection of this, not a revision, unless you, unless someone can come back with a proposal that meets all the existing regulations, then it won't fit in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Phil Toledo, I live at 47 Chelman Street, director abutter to the address in question, and I am opposed to it, it's just too big for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. A response?
Thank you, Madam Chair, there are a few things that I would like to highlight. First of all, we do have numerous letters of support that have been provided to the board, including from our rear abutter, who is arguably the most impacted by this because of the rear yard non-conformity. I also want to point out that the forms of zoning relief that we are seeking are quite modest, and we are indeed approving pre-existing non-conformities that are there on the lot at this time. Again, as I stated previously, there are 20 duplex townhouses within a quarter-mile radius of this property, there is also a relatively recently approved by this board duplex project at 57 to 577 to 583B Baker Street, it's in the same zoning district, a 1F-6,000 sub-district, that was six attached townhomes with an FAR greater than this, that was an FAR of .61, and that was approved by that, by this board just two years ago.
Yes, we watch it because, yes, we know, okay.
Is there, one of the issues that was mentioned was the possibility of orientation towards the VFW Parkway, is there a reason that you didn't do that?
That was actually my first thought when we were designing this with my architect, but the problem is the lot is not very deep, so we can't turn it because of the, actually the dimensional requirements would be worse than what we're seeking now, the only way that we could fit this was basically to do two townhouses right next to each other, to make them look like single-family homes next to each other and to design it that way, because turning it over, the lot is just too narrow to do that, otherwise I would have loved to, if the lot was flipping the other way, I would absolutely do that, but unfortunately, because of the depth, we had no choice.
And most of the houses on the street are fairly modest, and this is in fact an eyesore, because when I do drive by, I wonder about it, but, you know, so anyway, may I have a motion, please?
We got one more speaker here, we have three.
Then why don't you hustle and get yourself up here, when I asked everybody, okay?
I'm Hugh Manning, I lived on Chelman Street for 40 years.
Your address, please?
And a single-family house.
Your address?
My name is Hugh Manning.
Address, Hugh.
Address.
46 Chelman Street.
46, thank you, and you're in opposition?
We, I am. We, I am, and I believe you've also received the notes of everybody else in opposition on the street, and the streets are joining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think there is a solution that could be potentially found here, but not in the present form.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that, with motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-6177, 16 Meredith Street. This is parking for two vehicles next to the house. The violation is Article 10, Section 1. Proposed parking is within five feet of the side lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is George Darbaloof. I am the property owner at 16 Meredith Street, West Roxbury.
So tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing to put a driveway to the left of the property, and the problem was that we have a two-and-a-half-foot clearance between the left side of the driveway and the property line from our neighbor at 14 Meredith Street. I have a letter from, I'm sorry-
So before we go there, tell us about the driveway. How deep is it? How are you proposing to? Do you have a garage already?
There's no garage. There won't be a garage. It'll be open parking, two cars tandem. I will also, I own an electric car, so there'll be ability to charge the car from the side of the house.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
They're problematic, the way it's designed as of now, it's front yard parking. Is there a reason behind where you're showing the cars in tandem, it's patio, patio there?
There's a walkway toward a patio. There's a fence between the house and the, the cars will be parked to the side of the house, though, not on the front.
Well, no, that's not what it shows here. What we mean by front yard parking is if the cars extend beyond the front of the house.
I'm sorry, the parking?
Is there a reason why that driveway can't be extended further toward the back of the house, rear of the house?
Yeah, it could be extended. That's not, that's not an issue.
Okay, because we will not approve it under the current configuration.
So you want it, you want it moved back?
We would, we would want the, whether it's the rear or the front, the end of the car, the furthest toward the street, to be even with the front of the house, and no further.
That can be done.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Doug in Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services just like to go on record in support. We had a butters' meeting in December. A couple neighbors came. They're all in support, including a directive butler, which George has a letter of support from. And he went to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council this past month in January and received their support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council of Savi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with the following provision, that there be no front yard parking and that the driveway be reconfigured to allow for the car that is furthest toward the street to be even with the front of the building.
Is that accomplished through design review? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, before I call the next case at 10:30, I'm going to call the 11:30s for deferrals or withdrawals. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Counselor address?
This is actually for a 10:30 case.
10:30 case?
Yeah.
All right.
56 Winship.
For the record, calling BOA 979-917-56-WINSHIPSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street. We are seeking a deferral. We were asked by the Civic Association and the mayor's office to go back to the Civic Association with some additional changes and for another vote, so we would seek a deferral for that.
Motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date?
April 7th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Address, please?
22 Wartsworth Street.
That's for 11:30.
Correct.
Calling BOA 966-339-22WARTSWORTHSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we have been in ongoing conversations with the director butler. We believe there are several minor modifications to the plan that we could make to address a number of their concerns. We'd like to take the time to do that and come back.
So this is your second or your third?
Second.
This is your request for a second deferral?
Correct.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We also have a date of April 7th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Address, please?
Good morning, Madam-
Address, please?
-Chair, members of the board. 643 Morton Street, Matt Ben.
Are you deferring?
Yes.
For the record, calling case 971-286-643-MORTONSTREET. Sorry, there's two companion case, 971-287-643-MORTONSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Siobhan Roberts, 643 Morton Street.
So why do you need the deferral?
We are presently receiving proposals to put in the, it's for fire, I'm sorry, sprinkler system. So we're-
So, but, but do you have an architect working with you?
Yes, and he couldn't be here today, so he asked also that we put in a deferral.
And is this your second request for a deferral?
Yes.
Okay, we, and I, and I mentioned before that we're limiting the requests for deferrals. So if this is your second request, please know that the next time, you're going to look at it a little bit more seriously, okay?
Yes.
So try and get it done by then. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We also have a date of April 7th at 11:30.
Is that enough time, or do you need more time?
We're getting the proposals up in March, April, May. If we could get more time, that would be great.
You can give whatever you want. December?
Yes, that'd be great. I'm sure it'll be done by then.
How about May, May 19th?
May 19th at 11:30.
Okay, thank you kindly.
You're welcome. Address, sir?
139 Everett Street, East Boston.
For the record, case 959-516-139-EVERYSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Tavio Galatto, 139 Everett Street, East Boston.
And what are you requesting, sir?
I'm asking for a second deferral so that we can go to the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association for a vote on February 10th, and hopefully we could come back the next time to get approval.
You've heard what I've said to previous applicants, okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We'll also have a date of April 7th at 11:30.
April 7th at 11:30. We'll see you then. Okay?
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Hearing none, I'll go back to the 10:30 cases. Calling BOA 101-6400-541-CAMBRIDGESTREET. This is a 19-by-27 addition to the east side of the building over an existing footprint, 11-by-41 dormer addition to the top floor of east side of the building, 11-by-53 dormer addition to the top floor on the west side of the building, and renovation of interior, exterior, and all existing floors. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use office with accessory keeping of animals other than laboratory animals. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Ruffo, Smith, Doug &amp; Drew Ruffo at 101 R Street in Boston. With me-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
With me is Angela Lett, who is the executive director of the Helping Hands, the monkey helpers, and also the architect for the project, Tom White.
So this project has been before this board over the years three or four times with this, this applicant. So tell us about this addition specifically. Is it office use? Was it, what is it?
No, just, just to set it quickly, thank you, Madam Chair, is this is a proposed expansion of the living space for the monkeys. Once they reach retirement, quote unquote, when their, their ability to serve, the quadriplegics that they serve, becomes diminished. Because of changes in the federal law, they are not eligible for adoption. So obviously, we want to treat them in a humane way, and we need additional space for them to enjoy the rest of their, of their natural lives. So the idea, the idea that the architect and, and the folks at the, Angela and her staff have come up with is that they will actually flip the use of the building, where now administrative staff occupy the second floor space and, because they'll be able to build it out, and then, as you see in the plans, they're kind of expanding it. The height is, there's a height violation, but it's actually going to match the height of the existing roof. It just gives a bigger envelope, if you will, to create this space for the monkeys to enjoy the rest of their, their time. And in effect, giving the monkeys the prime real estate within the building and moving the humans down to the work, the workspace. So that's the purpose behind.
So the humans will be at the first floor?
Yes.
And the-
Ground floor.
On the ground floor. And what is the total square feet of this addition?
I want to say 540.
I think 528 square feet.
528 square feet, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing to five.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
While, while they're going to the, we have a couple of letters of support from the community.
Hold on, hold on, go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let go on record in support of this proposal. Helping Hands is a fantastic organization that has called Austin their home for a while. We conducted an abutters' meeting on December 17th. They answered and addressed the concerns and questions that the abutters had, and we're fully in favor of this proposal. They went on to the Austin Civic Association as well, received their support, and presented to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association.
Hi, my name is Lee Nave with Counselor Breeden's office and the district counselor for Austin-Brighton. We are in support of this particular project. The counselor is a physical therapist and knows the need of having projects like this that help the community as much as possible, as soon, as well as our senior populations, people with disabilities. And so this particular project is something that really helps out our community, so we are in full support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council of Savi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Tizidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We want to commend Helping Hands on the great work they do in our community, and we would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Oh.
Design review?
The design review, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 748-842-47-DITTONSTREET. Companion case, BOA 748-850-49-DITTONSTREET. This is for 47, this is change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family in existing condition. Violation is Article 51, Section 8, basement apartment, basement apartment is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9-
Are you going ahead?
Madam Speaker, this, I'm Kevin McQuaid. My boss is very sick. I'm going to go in with somebody here.
So you're asking for a deferral?
Yes.
Okay. Motion.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
April 7th at 11:30.
April 7th at 11:30. We'll go ahead with this.
Thanks, hon.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-5757-153-FosterSTREET. This is a rectory third-story dormer, rare addition, extend living area, interior, exterior renovations, and change legal occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. The violation is Article 51, Section 8, a three-family abuse is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 51, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded as maximum story two and a half. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient radyad setback. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient and not as proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Jacob Simmons of the De Facto Trust LLC, the owner of the property. Madam Chair, member, this is a proposal to change the legal occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling within the existing building footprint. There's currently one parking space in the driveway to the right of the building which will remain. It would be a partial infill of approximately half of the existing rear porch on the first floor level, adding about 95 square feet of living space to the building. That partially makes up for approximately 302 square feet of what is now living space in the building's basement that will be converted substantially to a common mechanical room. Additional interior square footage will be added to the third floor level, where existing dormers on each side will be replaced with new dormers. The new dormers are approximately the same size as the existing dormers. Altogether, the gross square footage of the building will increase from approximately 4,000 square feet to just about 4,721 square feet, resulting in an increase in the building's FAR from the present .8 to just about 1. That's about a 15% increase in FAR. With respect to actual density of the building, using the benchmark of bedroom count, there are currently five-plus bedrooms in the building. By that, I mean there are five bedrooms plus a bonus room that can, and I believe has, been used as a bedroom. After the proposed renovation, there would be six-plus bedrooms. So an increase from a two-family to a three-family, but in terms of bedroom count, in addition of only one, one more bedroom.
So what, so unit one is, how many bedrooms?
The resulting unit sizes and configurations, unit one is a 1,548-square-foot two-bedroom square foot, two-bedroom unit. Unit two would be a nine hundred forty-one square foot, two-plus bedroom unit. Unit three would be an eight hundred twenty square foot, two-bedroom unit. The building's footprint is not growing, as I said, nor is the building's height being increased. The cited zoning violations for which relief is being sought are as follows. As this is a two F five thousand zoning district, of course, there's a use violation for the proposed three-family use. The maximum FAR in the district is point six. The FAR is growing from an existing condition of point eight to one. There is a story height violation cited on the refusal letter, which is owing solely to the, the dormers, which create a third floor. I would contend that the existing dormers effectively mean that it already is a three-story building, but ISD did cite for a building height violation, not in linear feet, but because it's a two-and-a-half-story district. There's a cited rear yard setback violation, even though no part of the building was extended back from the existing condition. It's because of the infill construction that is occurring within the area of the required rear setback. So, that is because of that ninety-foot square foot captured area on the first floor where part, half, essentially, of the existing porch is being enclosed. And relief is being sought, owing, of course, to the inability to add an additional, additional off-street parking, as the building would grow from two to three units.
Ms. Moranci, tell us about this proposed basement plan. It looks like the first unit will be using some of that basement space. Is that true?
Yes. Unit one has living space in the basement. If you look at existing basement, it's all living space currently. It's a bedroom, it's a hall, it's a living area.
What's the floor-to-ceiling height in that basement?
Seven feet, nine inches, I believe.
And with the proposed, is, I can see a bathroom there. Is that a sink, a kitchen sink in the basement? I'm looking at Z one point one.
Yeah, I've seen that. Yeah, I guess it's a wet bar. I don't think it's a, it's a sink. It's not intended as a kitchen. It's certainly not another unit, but.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Joining me.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Conor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, let go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted an abutters meeting on November fourth. It was a good turnout, and they addressed, the applicant addressed the concerns and answered the questions of the next-door neighbors. And then, we ended up receiving three letters of support from the surrounding abutters.
And what were the concerns? Is this now student, student occupied?
There, I believe there were some B.C. students that were living there at the time. The primary concern was just ensuring that they weren't expanding the footprint of the building, which they are not, and also just ensuring that the materials that they end up using just fit in with the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We voted against supporting this project.
Is there a reason, Annabelle?
There was mixed reviews. Some people were in support of it, but it didn't get the vote to support.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We hope that there, there are students in that building, you're looking to have more long-term residents in there.
Design review, want a design review on that, please?
Yeah, motion with design review.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Counselor Drago, how do you want to do this? We're going to do all these all at once?
All.
Okay. Calling the next six cases. Calling BOA one zero three, three four seven zero, Ford Braintree Street. Their companion cases, BOA one zero three, three four six nine, twenty Braintree Street. BOA one zero three, one zero three, three four seven five, three thirty-four to three sixty-two Cambridge Street. BOA one zero three, three four seven four, one Highgate Street. BOA one zero three, three four six eight, sixteen Highgate Street. And BOA one zero three, three four seven two, eight to twelve Wilton. This is for Ford Braintree, seeking to change occupancy from nine residential units to two retail spaces, to be known as four to eight Franklin Street. The violation is Article fifty-one, Section nineteen, a multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. This is for twenty Braintree. This is seeking to raise existing structure, erect a seven-story mixed-use building with sixty-six residential units, two retail spaces, and twenty-four parking spaces. A combined lots of sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-four square feet. The violation is Article fifty-one, Section nineteen, a multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for three thirty-four to three sixty-two Cambridge Street. This is seeking to change the occupancy of a residential building with seventy-one units, seventeen parking spaces. Also, raise a portion of the existing structure, erect a six-story addition, and renovate, renovate the remaining structure to be known as ten Highgate Street.
So, hold on, sorry, Mark, can we, can we look at Highgate separately from these Braintree ones?
This is, this is Cambridge.
This is Cambridge, okay.
Yep, we can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we can, let's do three and three, how's that sound?
Yeah, that's, because, because really, Jack Young, and that's kind of on the other side of the street. So, let's look at just the Braintree stuff all on one, on the, this side of Cambridge.
All right, so, I'll continue on this one here. The violation, Article fifty-one, Section sixteen, a multi-family dwelling use is conditional. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the rear yard is insufficient. Does this work for you?
It is, I just, it is all one project together as approved.
I understand, but this, isn't this side of the street all L, some, some of it L and some of it neighborhood, is it neighborhood shopping or C.C.?
So, the.
So, on the Braintree end of it.
It's Harvard Avenue, C.C.
Yeah.
It mixes through the project.
So, let's look at Highgate separately, because that's different.
Okay.
So, so, please talk about these, this, this, this set.
Okay, so, obviously, this is part of the whole project. The two that you want to talk about is the eight Wilton Street.
I haven't even called that one in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, one Highgate and.
Hold on.
What are we calling?
I've called the first three cases.
Which is?
Braintree Street and Cambridge Street. I haven't called Highgate or Wilton.
So, let's call Wilton, because Wilton is part of Cambridge.
So, that's eight dash twelve Wilton, Madam Chair?
Yep, twenty Braintree and four to eight Franklin.
If you look at.
Madam Chair, I need to do this all together. I'm going to call it all in, and then, we can figure, break it apart afterwards.
Okay.
So, this is for one Highgate. This is seeking to raise the existing structure, erect a seven-story mixed-use building with eighty-two residential units, two retail spaces, and fifty-nine parking spaces with combined lots of eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Violation is Article fifty-one, Section sixteen, multi-family dwelling is a conditional use. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, usable open space per dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the rear yard is insufficient. This is sixteen Highgate, seeking to raise the existing structure, erect a three-story building with nine residential units and six parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section eight, a multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the additional odd area is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for Wilton. This is seeking eight to twelve Wilton Street, seeking to raise the existing structure, erect a seven-story mixed-use building with one hundred and seven residential units, one retail space, and fifty-two parking spaces. Combined lots of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven square feet. Violation, Article fifty-one, Section sixteen, multi-family dwelling use is conditional. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nineteen, multi-family, multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section twenty, building height is excessive. And Article fifty-one, Section twenty, rear yard is insufficient. Don't ask me to do this again.
I will not.
I won't.
Okay, so, let's go through all those proposals that are in L, in the, in the industrial zone, please, okay? And on that side of Cambridge Street.
You want to do it section by section?
I want to do it section by section, so we can, can understand what the violations are.
Sure. So, Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscana with an address of fifteen Broad Street, representing City Realty, the owners and developers of the Alston Square Project, and also D'Artagnan Brown and Dan Artigius from Embark, the architects on the projects. The packet of information that's provided, the first few pages, actually break down nicely with the renderings of all the buildings, because this doesn't compass six different buildings, two of which are being preserved, the wrecks are being built new. In the section that you had mentioned, eight dash twelve Wilton Street, which is formerly four fifteen Cambridge Street, these got new addresses from ISD. Twenty Braintree Street, which is Franklin Braintree, and then, four dash eight Franklin Street, which is Alston Hall, four Braintree Street. Those are those three separate buildings in that corridor. This is a mixed-use project, so it involves condominium, it involves rental, and it also involves commercial on the ground level with a parking ratio that goes along. If you take a look in each of those boxes, it breaks that down. So, eight dash twelve Wilton Street is a hundred and seven-unit condos, parking for fifty-two spaces, one thousand nine hundred and five, fifty-five gross square feet of retail. Our building gross square footage is a hundred and eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five feet. Our FAR is three point six six. That particular building, these are all in the local industrial zone, Madam Chair, as you had asked. We do meet, the FAR required what's allowable, we're asking for a three point six six. One point oh is what's allowable in the district, so we are seeking a variance for FAR. Our minimum rear yard required would be twenty feet. We have zero. Maximum building height is thirty-five feet. We're at seven stories, eighty-three feet, eight inches. Those are the violations that go along with eight dash twelve Wilton Street. The next, and forgive me if there's questions as, as I go along, I'll go on to the next building, if, if there's none. Twenty Braintree Street is a breakdown of sixty-six condominium units, twenty-four parking spaces, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet of retail space with an FAR of four point one eight. That.
And twenty Braintree has how many live-work spaces?
Two.
Just two?
Yeah, there are twelve total throughout the whole project, but two that go along with that building.
And so, and Wilton, Wilton does not have any live-work?
That has two.
That also has two?
Correct.
Okay.
So, for the Franklin Braintree, or the twenty Braintree, the variances we are seeking is FAR of four point one eight. What's allowed is one. Again, our rear setback is zero. Twenty would be required. Height and stories is seven stories. It's a thirty-five-foot height requirement. We're seeking seven stories at eighty-three feet. And our minimal usable open space, it's fifty square feet per unit. We're at four thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet total. Finally, four dash eight Franklin Street. We have nine rental units associated with that building, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet of retail. The building size is sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty square feet, and we have an FAR of four point nine four.
And the, in, in all this, what was the zoning requirement? Is it one or two?
So, it's one in all these?
It's one.
Correct.
It's at LI one?
And this is.
And then, it's split between C.C., C.C. one, right?
So, it's local industri, you mean for the whole project?
So, for, for this side of the street, it's split between LI one and C.C. one?
Where all local industrial?
Entirely local industrial.
Yes.
Okay.
This building, though, by the way, matches, is being preserved. This building will remain.
Yep. So, so, tell us on Wilton Street, the breakdown of the unit sizes? How many ones, how many twos, and more importantly, how many threes?
I'm going to defer to D'Artagnan to go over that.
So, Madam Chair, D'Artagnan Brown, architect from Embark, on eight twelve Wilton Street, the breakout of units. So, for a total of a hundred and seven units, eleven are studios, average four hundred and seventy square feet. We have forty-one and one-plus bedrooms between six hundred and fifty to nine hundred and thirty square feet. We have fifty-three two-bedroom units, eight seventy-five square foot average, and we have one three-bedroom at thirteen hundred and twenty-five square feet. And again, as mentioned, two live-work that are around six hundred and twenty square feet.
Six hundred and twenty for live-work?
Correct.
And so, does, does the live-work meet the micro standards? And, and are these, are the studios micro standards, or are they just?
What size do you say the studios were?
Four seventy.
Four seventy.
Four fifty, is that right?
Right, correct.
Okay. And then, tell us the need, so that's fifty-two parking spaces, two live-work, and then, was there retail, retail space on Wilton?
There is nineteen hundred and fifty-five square feet of retail.
And what, what kind of retail is that anticipated to be?
We're anticipating that to be a local retail. We've met with Alston Village Main Streets on a couple of occasions, and we didn't presume an end user yet, but we did talk with them about, on the smaller spaces, working together to find a good local user.
Okay. And there's fifty-two parking, what's the requirement for parking?
It's, so, it's all rolled into the Article eighty parking requirement, so we didn't get triggered for a violation for, we shouldn't have been triggered for a violation for parking, because it's large project review.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, the footnote in Article fifty-one for off-street parking does state that.
I know. The, the question is, you know, there's always been an issue with parking there, and, you know, and these are meant to be condos, right?
This particular building, yes.
This particular building is condos.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's go to twenty Braintree. There's two live-work. Tell us about the breakdown on the units.
So, twenty Braintree is sixty-six condo units?
Okay.
Okay.
Is it sixty, sixty, or sixty-six?
Sixty-six.
Okay.
With twenty-four parking spaces to go along with that building.
Thousand retail.
Two thousand.
So, I'll get into the breakdown. So, out of the sixty-six units, thirteen are studios at a five sixty-five average, twenty-four are one-bedrooms at a seven twenty-seven average, twenty-two are two-bedrooms at a nine hundred and twelve square foot average, five three-bedrooms at twelve hundred and ninety-five square foot average, and then, the two artists' live-work are at seven hundred and sixty-three square foot average.
Seven hundred and sixty.
Sixty-three.
And tell us again, if, is retail really needed on Braintree Street?
So, working with the BPDA closely through the design review process, the, the master plan for Braintree Street, as it connects down back to the T, the whole idea is to in-living the pedestrian experience over time as this strip of the neighborhood does get developed. So, originally, we had more parking, working with the BPDA. We've looked at in-living this section of Braintree with the future proposal of the pedestrian bridge coming at the Franklin Braintree intersection.
Okay. And tell us about four to eight Franklin Street?
So, four to eight Franklin.
Nine rental unit in that building.
That's nine rentals, yeah?
Nine rentals, yeah.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
And three thousand eight sixty.
Yeah, so, again, this is going to go through a full historic rehab for the Alston Hall. The, out of the nine units, two are studios at seven forty square foot average, four one-bedrooms at seven fifty square foot average, and three two-bedrooms at nine hundred and fifteen square foot average. And this one does have three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet, so it's essentially the, the majority of the ground floor as retail space.
Can I just ask a question of the BPDA? Is, is the BPDA project manager here for this project?
Yes.
Lance, put your name and address on the record, please.
Lance Campbell, Senior Project Manager from the Boston Plan and Development Agency. Madam Chair, members of the board, question?
Yes, I just have a question for you. This is very, there's very limited local industrial space in the city anymore, and specifically in Alston, Brighton, because, you know, the Stop and Shop went in, and all the guest street construction now has resulted in minimum local industrial use, or possibilities for local industrial use. This is the second component where there is industrial, it's zoned, where somebody could go in as a right, and I think partly, partly, the third piece could be on, on the Jack Young property, because some of that might be a combination.
Linden Street.
So, what is the policy about proposing, promoting and, and encouraging industrial uses in proximity of residents who can walk to the, to work there? What, what happened?
Backstreets is no longer an initiative of this administration, and it was something that was born under the last administration. There is no policy technically in place. These guys acquired the properties and assembled them. There was no real mechanism to go forward for the zoning. It was very challenging for us, because we couldn't do a PDA here, PDAs weren't allowed, we couldn't do a one-twenty-one A, because we didn't want to give them a special preference, so somebody else would come along and try and do that somewhere, somewhere else in the city and set in a precedent.
You just think Appleton has a high time here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mark. I said, we, there was no mechanism to go forward with this, because it was scattered site, and it was so many buildings that had been sitting vacant for years. The Jack Young Building, formerly the Allen Building, or originally the Allen Building, the Jack Young Building, these guys came along and.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, because I look, I look very specifically at Braintree, and I, Mrs. Roach is probably long, come, is long gone now, but she lived on Hino Street, and, you know, there was this whole conversation about the need for local industrial, for the fact that, you know, there were people who still needed those kind of jobs, and, you know, now, you know, that entire stretch is, is gone. And the only real industrial space is the EDAs at Alston Landing, and that's been acquired by Harvard, and there might be a couple of spots, you know, but, but, just ask what the industrial policy is.
Yeah, I mean, there isn't one sitting now. There isn't an active industrial policy. But you're right about the EDAs. And, you know, we try to promote it where we can. But the trend has been, has changed. And it's changing for housing, for housing for the better.
Thank you. What are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are fine. I do have a few questions. I'm just curious. We typically see projects that are either condos or rentals. This is a mix of condos and rentals. I'm just wondering what the thinking was behind that.
This is off the applicant. Thank you, Lance.
So through the community process, we heard sort of the need for both. And having the multiple buildings on different sites, we felt it important to integrate both homeownership and rental and commercial throughout the sites. So we ended up, through the community process, on a higher percentage of condo homeownership. But, as I said, felt it important of both.
And other projects in Alston-Brighton that have come before us, dealing with homeownership, have often had, have had deed restrictions, whether it's, or issues around students. Has any of that been incorporated into this project?
So through the process, we agreed to restrict the condo homeownership to ensure 51% or more owner occupied. And then from the rental management, we would be managing the rental properties ourselves and have a good track record in that department.
But nothing specific about students one way or the other?
We did, there were some discussions around limiting undergrads, but nothing formal. But we're open to keep talking with the community.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this proposal. This community process has gone on for two-plus years. I actually remember attending a BAI meeting as just a regular civilian and first hearing about this proposal. They've extensively listened to the community, adding green space off of the Highgate portion of Pocket Park, focusing more on condominiums, as the desire from residents has been more homeownership opportunities in the area. We think this will be a great node right on the connection of Boston Landing and eventually West Station, when it opens up off Ashford. So we think this is a fantastic area, and it's a really good chance for redevelopment.
Was there any conversation about, to pick up on Mr. Olick's point, about student housing?
I know that's a frequent concern in most of the larger projects, is asking for restrictions on undergrads. I think that City Realty has a good track record of working with constituents. And I think that's a conversation that will continue.
Go ahead.
Hi, Lee Nae from Councilor Breeden's office. We're in support of this project. We feel like, we feel that it could really bring a lot to the Alston Village area. This particular area, you mentioned the transformation this area's seen over the years. Right now, the Harvard Street, the Brighton Ave, this particular area has a lot of, lot of life, per se. And we're hoping that we can have more folks come to this area and have the ability to live in this area, to contribute to that, that, the local businesses in the area. So we're in support of this project. And we're also hoping that there's more conversations had about affordability, and also how the artist spaces will be utilized to best emphasize the culture of Alston Village.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabe George's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Please, if anybody else is here to speak in support, please step up.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Rosie Hanlon. I'm a lifelong resident of Brighton. I live at 172 Chiswick Road. For the record, I am a past Executive Director of the Brighton Main Streets District, and currently the Executive Director of the Jackson Main Community Center. I am also a member of the IAG, IAG of this project. I speak in support. We worked diligently with the team here, and with Lance, and the members of the IAG. And we've, many of the suggestions that we brought forth were taken into consideration. One of the biggest ones was taking the Jack Young Building and preserving it. When they first came, that was going to be demoed. And we're really pretty excited that that's going to be maintained. I also look at this as an opportunity for the, for the district of the Alston Village Main Streets to be revitalized even more, and to stay on track with what Alston Village Main Streets has been doing for over 25 years. So I congratulate this team for doing that. And also looking to bring new members in, and working with local businesses. I thank you, Madam Chair, for looking at the industrial use of the, of our community, because I think that's important. But what we're seeing is so many vacancies and dire conditions of the, of the area. So this is, this is definitely a plus. And on Braintree Street, I think it's great to bring in a mix of retail. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Please hustle. We are, want to hear from you, but don't, just let's get you on the record.
Madam Chair, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We voted to support their final version. Thank you.
Well, then, Chair, members of the board, mine operates with the carpenters. You know, we're in support of the project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disodoro with the Alston Civic Association. Just say that this has been a two-and-a-half-year process of community review. And the project has evolved over time. And they have been responsive in a lot of different areas. But I just want to reiterate just a few points. We would obviously like to see a ban on undergraduate student housing. We obviously would like to see some more affordability and deeper affordability. We'd like to see owner occupancy up to 70% instead of 51%. And a major issue that the proponents have been good enough to respond to, and have promised to respond to, we need a very serious construction mitigation plan that will be communicated to the community. We have a number of projects that are in the pipeline in this area. And the timing is the perfect storm developing. And it's very important that this team come back after, if they are approved, to come back to the community and to communicate how this is all going to get coordinated with traffic and just the public safety involved.
Madam Chair, Council, my name is Douglas Arcand. I was an IAG member and a director of Butter, and I fully support this.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Creighton, I haven't seen you in a while. Not since you were last opposing the project across-
Thank you. Yeah, we've come full circle for this corner, I think, I'm afraid.
I'm afraid, too.
My name is Paul Creighton. I live at 10 Parkville Ave in Alston. I'm also affiliated with an organization that owns a building at 406 Cambridge Street, across the street from this project, and next to what used to be city-owned land, and now is home to a five-story building that we opposed down here a couple of years back, that was much too high. Now, one of the things I would like to say is that, as long as this board keeps giving height variances, setback variances, FAR variances, the value of the land is going to keep going up. And like a dog chasing his tail, the properties and the heights will go up. Arcand, you gave him a four-and-a-half-story building. Next to our organization on Cambridge Street, you gave him a five-story building, which you can't get your little finger between all the properties that are above it. And now you're going to seven floors. And so it's an incremental creep in height. So I think you have to think about these things, not in the vacuum that they present here, which in any rational planning process would be viewed in a much bigger macro context. You have the Jack Young Building, half of it's not shown on the diagram. They only own the front part. The part that goes down Linden Street looks just like the front. It goes down the street. It's the same building. They left it off their picture. The word around town is that the Autobody Shop has been sold. The Auto Pats Place has been sold at the corner of Wilton. So they'll be back. On Linden Street, you want to talk about the loss of industrial property, the old HF Livermore Building, which was converted into a office building. That's going to go. There's a project in the works to do, I don't know how many hundreds of units going down Linden Street, going left onto Pratt Street, more high rises. Now, one of the problems is, I mean, I don't think that the erstwhile BRA, now the BPDA, has seen a building that's been too high, or too wide, or too thick, since Cain-Simonion was in this building. I mean, it's really something that you're going to have, it's going to be the legacy of this board. People will wake up and say, wow, they jammed a lot of buildings here. A seven-story building on the corner of Harvard Ave and Cambridge Street. We're living with a construction project that's out into the middle of the, the northbound side of Cambridge Street. They're out into the middle of the street. They have the Johnny's on the spot on the sidewalk. They stop traffic for who knows how long when they bring in the big trucks and cranes and everything else. I mean, it's such poor planning across the board. The BRA pushed that five-story building next to us, which had been green space. And now, when you listen to these proposals that are coming up for the Braintree Street, you've got seven-story buildings in the works in Braintree Street. You've got more buildings on Rug Road. The whole place has been leveled. You couldn't get a job in any of these places unless you're a rental agent. And the problem is, they just keep adding to it. They fund a lousy mobility study to try to figure out how everybody's going to get around. So it's really out of control. And hopefully, the board would recognize that the granting of these variances for height, for setback, for FARs, there's no hardship involved here. There's no hardship that should be the foundation of zoning variances. It's all about packing them in. Now they want, now you're going to have micro apartments, which would be nice for a single-room occupancy. But if you're somebody who wants a little more than that, you'll have to go out into the hallway to turn around. So I think you really should, you think about what you're doing down here. You should send a message to the BPDA that they need to do better planning. It's just one proposal into the pipeline. These IAGs, for the most parts, have fig leaves. I came to this first meeting a couple of years ago. Very little has changed in this proposal, very little. It's really an insult to present a project like that for all these variances as a package. It should be some kind of PDA. It should have been a broader look at the whole neighborhood, a seven-story building on the corner of Harvard Ave and Cambridge Street. So, I mean, now you're going to get nine-story buildings. I mean, they're already sniffing around to put up nine-story buildings. So just tighten your seatbelt.
Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
I've separated these projects into two. So your comments that you've made for this part of Cambridge Street will hold true for the other three buildings on Highgate, on Highgate Street, then? Should I assume that?
Are you telling me that or asking me that?
I'm asking you that.
All right.
I'm assuming that, is that right?
Okay. I think so. Presume or resume?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in opposition? Given that information, the one question we did not ask is, in this, these three proposals, Wilton, Braintree, and Franklin, how many affordable units will there be in this total of 100? In this, in this total?
So the 8 to 12 Wilton Street has 16 IDP units, including the two live-work spaces. We heard through the process, it was important for those to be designated as IDP. And in the 20 Braintree Street, there'll be nine IDP units, also including the two artists' live-work. And none in the 4 Braintree Street.
Has, have these artists' live-work units been looked at by the city's artist department, creative art department?
They were acting.
Because they were Courtney Sharp and the team? And then, because these, some of these units, is there, is there common space if you're going to the micro-unit level? What is the common space on this?
So there is common space throughout all the buildings. We did study the compact living. We're not officially in it.
Not officially, even, even for these live-work spaces?
Right. We did study the policy, and we exceed the common area. We exceed on the transportation demand management items. And so we took some time to go through it and make sure. But as I said, we're not part of it. But we do comply with its common area and other requirements.
So you're at 13% affordable?
Yes.
The bare minimum?
Yes.
Which is 45 units for the total project.
So out of the 182 units, this is 13% affordable?
Correct.
Okay, given this information, may I have a motion on these, these three units, on these three proposals?
A motion to approve with the continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Items in opposition? However, this motion carries, this motion carries for approval with design review.
Thank you.
Do we go right into 11/30s?
Pardon? No, we still have the other three to go through.
Oh.
So this was High, this was the two Braintree's and Cambridge Street. Okay? And now let's go through the details on Highgate.
I could, Madam Chair?
This is all called into the record, but the vote was for these three, because they were all in their local industrial on one side of the street. Okay?
Okay.
So let's go through the Jack Young Building, Highgates, all the Highgates, essentially.
Madam Chair, this is all one proposed project?
I get it. I get it. But on the, but so far, we've accounted for 182 units of condo units at 8 to 12 Wilton. We have the 66 condo units at 20 Braintree, and the Franklin ones, the nine rentals. So can you just walk us through the Highgates?
So, starting with 1 Highgate, Madam Chair, which is formerly 2-8 Harvard Ave. We have 82 rental units proposed, with 59 parking spaces, 7,915 gross square feet of retail space. The building is 79,000 gross square feet, with an FAR of 4.30. This building does fall under a community commercial district for zoning. We would be seeking a variance. Again, what's allowable is a 1.0 FAR. We're seeking 4.30. Our minimum rare setback, what would be allowed under the code, is 20. We're at 5. Maximum building height is 35 feet. We're proposing seven stories at 83 feet. And our minimal usable open space, 50 would be required. We're at 21 per unit. And so there's-
Then any artists' live-work spaces in 1 or 16?
In 1 Highgate, there are not. In 10 Highgate, formerly Jack Young, there are. That's eight live-work spaces.
16?
No, 16, there is not. I'm sorry.
So none in 16, and one, no, none in 1?
Correct.
And how many, I'm sorry, in 10?
Eight.
Eight in 10. And the square footage for those?
Let me go to, sorry, Madam Chair. The square footage for the 8 live-work is 668 square feet average.
Okay. And give us the breakdown on all three of these, because that's 162 units?
Sure.
On one's, studios ones and twos and threes?
So starting at 1 Highgate Street, out of 82 units, 38 are studios at a 510 square foot average. 34 of them are one-bedroom, one-bedroom dens, between 687 to 1,013 square feet. 10 are two bedrooms at a 920 square foot average. Moving to 10 Highgate Street, out of 71 units, 28 are studios at a 530 square foot average. 19 are one-bedroom and one-bedroom dens, between 640 square feet to 820 square feet. 16 are two bedrooms at 853 square foot average. And the eight, as I mentioned before, 668 for the live-work.
And note, and then how about 16?
Those are all condo, Madam Chair, too.
And the breakdowns?
In the 10 Highgate, that was all condo.
Oh, sorry, condos, okay.
Just wanted to make sure you had that.
Whereas 16 Highgate Street, so out of the nine units, one of them is a one-bed at 560. Two of them are two bedrooms at 903. Two of them are two-bedrooms at 903. And six of them are three-bedrooms at 1,148 square feet average.
And then, how many, and 13% again, on these, on affordables?
Correct. And in the 10 Highgate Street, again, the request was made to designate all of the live-work spaces for the I D P program. So that was done as well.
I see. Okay. And then, tell us about the retail again. What's the retail component?
So in one Highgate, let me just break it down.
And it's all seen again as local, local retail?
Yep. This is, there is one exception here. There's a very large space on the corner of Harvard and Cambridge in one Highgate. So that could be an anchor tenant, grocery store, or something. So that's one where we view there's a flexibility if there was something a little bit bigger to come in.
Yeah. And that space is approximately 5,400 square feet for that corner kind of anchor retail. There is another, another space that's 2,525 square feet. And then, building amenity as you turn down Highgate for kind of a gym fitness of 575 square feet.
And is any commercial space on this side? Because it's closer to the, you know, the business district, seen as affordable artist space, or show space, studio space, anything like that besides the live-work?
Through the process in 10 Highgate, originally, we did have a retail component there. And that was changed, as I said, through the process to have the artist-live-work there. These would all have direct street entry. It's an old retail front in the Jack Young Building. So that would invite, that could invite artists to open their doors to the public. And we have a very large lobby area in that that could also be used for display.
Okay, thank you. Again, can I assume that the people who spoke in support before are also in support on this one? Yes? Okay. And how about, and I know you were in opposition, Paul. Anybody else in opposition on this side of the street? Okay? You have questions?
Yeah, I just got a question. So, I'm just looking at a map view of this, right? So, your building, do you have the billboard or no?
No.
The billboard's the building next to it.
Yep.
So at one point, we were talking about taking down, the community wanted to preserve. If we were able to take the building down, because one leg touches the building, we could have taken the billboard down. We don't have the rights to do it. So by, we preserved that building, so the billboard had to remain.
And then, you're going to go up two stories, so the people are going to just have a view of the billboard?
Correct. That would be the rear back quadrant. The building above Jack Young is forward at that.
How many commercial spaces do you have total in this side of the project?
On this side of the project, there's two.
Two? So there's none in the former Jack Young building?
No, that's, was previously shown as some retail, and those were changed to artist-live-work.
Okay. And that's what, okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with continued B P D A design review.
If you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's continue till 11:30. We're going to take a five-minute break. Actually, that's the pearls, right? Yes, we'll take a five-minute break, and we will resume at 12:50. Board is back in session Tuesday, February 4th. We are here for the rediscussions. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the first case, calling B O A 970-669-798B, East Third Street. This is a construct, a rear addition, a one-story vertical addition on an attached, single-filing dwelling, and extend living space to the basement. Violation is Article 27 S, Section 5, the South Boston iPod, Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, and Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the Board. My name is Maureen Murray, 798B, East Third Street, South Boston.
Now, this was a project, 798B, East Third Street. I did ask Mr. Ehrlich to do a site visit, which he did. And I think I have your text here. So you're coming in with the same proposal?
Correct.
Okay? Mr. Ehrlich, I know you did a site visit with another architect, with an architect, and you had some thoughts about it, because this was a project where it, this is the middle building, three attached.
Correct.
One person has already built out. You're proposing to go further than that building, and the third, third unit is as-is.
Correct.
Okay? So based on your site visit, Mr. Ehrlich, did you have a conclusion?
Yeah. Not only did I go with another architect, I went with the former board architect, who has over 20 years' experience, so...
And this site visit was on December 16th?
Yes. Yes, it was. So we went and visited the site, and this is a complicated situation, because you're three attached, and you could have built this as of right, but because you're in the middle, you, the side yard setback, you would have to squeeze in five feet on either side and then go back to 20 feet, as I recall. And so that's why you needed the variance, because otherwise, it would have been as-of-right. The problem, and there was opposition from your butters to the depth. And the problem is that because, and in some ways, this seems a little bit unfair, but because you are linked to your two neighbors, I actually think that you kind of need to go in tandem with them. That was what Mr. Pazzani and I concluded, so that you have two choices. One is to go back the same distance as the other, which was 10 feet, as I recall, and go up to...
12, I think.
Or 12, that's right, I'm sorry. Two stories, as they did. Or to go back to full 20 feet, but then come in five feet on either side, which makes it a narrow addition. Then it's as-of-right, and you don't have to deal with us at all. But I think that our recommendation was that because the buildings are linked, and that to sort of have a sawtooth situation of each house having a different depth would create complications, both architecturally and in terms of your neighbors.
Mr. Ehrlich, can you make a motion about...
Well, actually, I wanted to ask them whether they wanted to reconsider the...
Well, could I ask a question? Our concern is that we first presented our interest in building out prior to the addition being done next door. We don't remember any variance having to be applied for, for the three-foot side setback as they're attached to us as well. We're not sure if there's any way, since the building had already been done that way on that side, if we might be able to not do the three-foot side setback on that side, but do three feet on the 798A side, so that we could be, you know, accomplish not having the hardship of the three-foot side setback on both sides?
Yeah, I mean, I, by zone, by right, if you want to do it as-of-right, you have to do the setback on both sides.
Okay.
So I guess the reason I'm saying this, so one of two things is going to happen. You can either withdraw, in which case, you can just go ahead and do it as-of-right, or if, the recommendation from the site visit will be to limit the depth at 12 feet.
So we could make a motion to...
Well, they could withdraw if they want.
Because they'll still need the relief, the side yard relief.
No, they won't.
They won't?
No, it will be as-of-right.
And could I also ask if, you know, we did have some opposition from our director butters, even though we weren't going back any further than code-aloud, and we weren't going any higher than code-aloud, is there any way that the support of eight other butters comes into play, or...
No, this is based on a site visit.
This is the recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Mr. Ehrlich, just before we go, there's still a violation of the roof structure restriction, though.
Of the roof structure restriction?
Yep.
And what was that you were proposing for the roof? Was that for headroom? Additional headroom?
No, we're putting a deck out the front.
For the front deck? Okay. So maybe we can parse it and just look at the front deck, right? Because you have two pieces. One is the front deck, and two was the rear extension into the rear yard.
Okay, all we looked at was the rear extension.
But, but the front yard didn't cause any, any angst with the neighbors?
Right.
So, so let's, let's just look at it and see about the front, the front proposal, just, you know, parse it that way.
Want to break it up?
Yeah, we can. I mean...
Okay.
So can I have a two-part motion?
Well, I still want to find out whether, what, how they want to proceed. I mean, because I, I feel, it's, it does feel a little unfair, but it is what it is.
I just feel it's unfair from the undue hardship of being just 18 feet wide.
Understood.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Well, again, I'm, do you want to withdraw on the rear addition?
I think we've got to withdraw. Now, if we can't do it, we got to withdraw.
Okay.
Bringing in, bringing a setback in doesn't do anything for us.
It seems unfortunate that the other house didn't have to get a variance.
Yes, yes.
Yes. And that's an issue with I S D, so...
Okay. In that case, what I will do is make a motion to approve the, the front, the front extension and to deny without prejudice on the, on the rear extension. Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Point of information.
No, we are done.
We don't have to speak on this?
We're done? Nope. We heard you the last time. Okay, next case, please.
Calling the next case, calling B O A, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, yeah, point of information. We deserve the right to speak on this. You can't make a motion without discussion.
Thank you. You're all, we are on to the next case.
Case 1013092.
We take, I have to...
570 Warren Street.
I tell you that testimony is taken on the behest of the chair.
Testimony was not taken on this.
So we're done. We're done. Okay? Next project. Next project.
Testimony was not taken on this, ma'am.
This was a change of occupancy from nine lodges...
Welcome to this next man. Testimony was not taken on this.
To one owner occupant, to 17 lodges and one owner occupant. Interior work only to create additional bedrooms for lodges from an existing, under-utilized space in the existing structure. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extensive and non-conforming use is conditional. Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking area. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking design, size, and maneuverability. And Article 2, Section 2-1, definitions, lodging house requires a living area. Note that all existing living areas are converted into bedrooms. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark LaCasse-Lacasslaw, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. With me is Brad Chambers, representative of the property owner. This is a proposal to substantially upgrade and improve this existing lodging house, which has been licensed as such since 1991. So for 29 years, it has been continuously used as a lodging house. The proposal before the Board today is to increase the occupancy of the lodging house from currently its nine lodgers and one onsite owner to 10, I'm sorry, 17 lodgers and one onsite manager owners, for a total of 18 occupied rooms. We deferred at the last hearing, and at the, before we deferred, Mr. Ehrlich asked that we submit revised plans showing a complete existing and proposed and layout. I believe you have those plans, and as do the handouts before you. I believe you have those plans, and as do the handouts before you.
So let me, let me get some clarification, because we had this issue at a previous meeting. What is the definition in this term that you're using as a lodger? Is this Airbnb, or is it in the old sense of the term lodger?
It's the old sense of the term lodger.
So this is for long-term rentals?
Yes.
It's not for one night? It's not for six months?
No.
It's for a period of time?
Yes.
And who's going to be managing the house? Who's, what's the name of the business that's going to be managing the building?
The Warren Street LLC, and we've made a commitment to the neighborhood associations to hire a manager from within the community.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, during one of our community meetings, there was actually substantial support for the concept of lodging house on an affordable basis, with a request that the manager be drawn from the community, and we made some contacts that night, and my client has made a commitment to do so, to have the live-in manager be someone from the community, such that he could, he or she could solicit potential tenants for these rooms from the community, and we made contact with the community association in that vicinity as well, and they've submitted a-
Is this a dry house or not?
It currently is, but that's not what it's going to be. It's going to be a regular lodging house without any kind of sober home specificity.
Okay. And how are you going to accomplish providing the additional bedrooms?
So as shown on the plans, the space is currently existing. On floors 1, 2, and 3, there's a total of 18 bedrooms. There are shared kitchen and bath facilities, which is consistent with the concept of lodging house and how this has always been laid out. So the rooms on the upper floors are going to be turned into bedrooms, as they currently are not.
And will any of these units be handicapped accessible?
I don't believe so, no. They're pre-existing.
Are you putting enough money in there that's going to trigger you into providing a handicapped unit?
That was not cited as part of our ISD review.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, the drawings are better than they were before. What is the average size of the bedrooms?
They're all about 10 by 12 at this low level, and then we go up to like 12 by 14. They're actually good-sized rooms, every room has a closet.
I actually don't know what the lodging house requirements are, but 150 square feet is the usual.
I believe it's 100 square feet.
You believe what?
I believe.
Well, if it's 10 by 12, it's 120.
Yeah, but these are on the large size, as far as lodging house goes, for other cases that I've seen, for sure. These are, these are good-sized rooms.
And is that parking garage going to stay on the lot? The garage, is that part of the lot?
No, it's not a garage. No, there's a, there's a separate two-and-a-half-story structure in the rear of the lot, and actually this Board approved a subdivision of this parcel in 1992. It was just never recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and that's one thing we're going to clean up as part of this overall project. So the building in the rear is a separate residential building, and the parking for the lodging house is entirely onsite, as shown on the site plan. There are nine spaces on the side of the building, which is one of our issues for zoning relief, that we're using the side yard as the parking. But again, that has been in existence for, as long as it's been a lodging house, has been parking on the side, what's the name of that street?
Intervell.
Intervell Street, on Intervell Street.
And what other improvements are you proposing for the building? Front yard, side yard, are you going to be updating the railings and the-
I want to update the entire building. I show on the elevations here, I want to, new windows, fix and paint everything. It's a really beautiful old grand house. I was hoping to restore it right back to its original.
And so what's it going to do, the rents? What will the rent range be?
That's a good question. It's been asked a lot. On average, 200. There's a couple of the larger rooms that will be a little bit more. There won't be any, it's a great asset for the community, because there's no first-last security. I mean, as we know nowadays, to get into some of these apartments, it's huge money, so it's going to be $200. It's going to be a month by-
Per week.
$100 a week?
Yes.
Two, four, six?
Eight hundred a month.
$300 a month for a room? Okay.
Yes.
What is the standard length of time for a typical tenant?
In a well-run, in a new place like I'm proposing, it could be up to years. I mean, just a lot of people just don't have the money nowadays, especially in the city. I mean, you got to hire a realtor to get you in somewhere. I mean, it's huge costs. It's four, five, $6,000 to get in somewhere, you know?
And that was the gist of the comments at the community meeting in discussing the cost of the rooms, is that it creates an affordability category that used to be quite prevalent, as you're all aware, in the South End, for example, that has now been lost. But this building is still part of this type of, just another kind of affordable housing, compact unit, if you will, but not really compact unit, because lodging house is still a separate category.
Will there be any other fees associated with this? Or it's just that fee?
Yeah, just the lodging fee.
There's no utilities? There's nothing else?
Look, cable, if you want cable in your room, but otherwise, no, no other hidden fees?
No, nothing else?
No, nothing.
And if I could, just so this is on the record, this is not any type of Airbnb or any other type of-
No, I didn't even know that was going on, but that came up several times. No, it's straight lodging house.
No, straight lodging house. Are there any similar websites?
And that, that would be in violation of the licensing board requirements as well, and we have a, we have a current certificate of inspection from ISD as a lodging house. So any of, any use along those lines would be inconsistent with the certificate of inspection and the licensing board requirements. So I have no intention of running a file of those requirements, especially in light of the new ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One bed per bedroom?
Yeah, oh yeah, this is just a strict one-bedroom lodging house. There's nothing hidden.
How many kitchens per bedroom? How many bedrooms for each kitchen?
There is eight, eight per kitchen.
Eight rooms, you all use one kitchen?
And bathrooms?
Yes, there's two kitchens in total, and there is, sorry, I just got cut off. God, there is-
15 lodges, two kitchens, how many bathrooms?
Four proposed, four proposed bathrooms.
Four bathrooms.
A lot of people in these situations all work different shifts and whatnot, you know?
There's also a large activity room on the third floor of the building.
There's also what, I'm sorry?
A large activity room. So there is a common area.
Common area for TV.
And although that was cited as one of the violations, the definition of lodging house, it says in the refusal letter, "requires living area." The lodging house definition does not require living area, in fact, but nevertheless, we have an activity room that serves as common area.
Okay, any other questions?
How does somebody become a tenant? So I see there's an office, but it's up on the third floor. So I mean, is it something, somebody can, can they come to the office and apply, or how does that all work?
Yep, again, there'll be an onsite manager in one of the rooms, so that person will be there on premises. And again, the strong desire of the community was that tenants come from that local area, which is why we've committed to hiring a manager who will be from the neighborhood. So the hope is, you know, marketing will be word of mouth.
Any other questions?
And it's not a sober house?
Nope, it is not a sober house.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support? I see Jessica, you're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Jessica with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office conducted in a Butters meeting on October 3rd, which was well-attended. During the meeting, residents expressed their support for the project, citing its previous use throughout the years as a rooming house. That was helpful in providing much-needed lodging for the people in the neighborhood. Project Wright also submitted a conditional support letter, provided they continue to work with the Neighborhood Association as far as finding someone to help with the units. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record to support that proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Let me just ask you one more question. The current tenants, how are you going to support them during the conversion?
We made, it's actually another great question, and this came up in all the Butters meeting and with Kim Janey's office. We're going to do a phased out. It's going to be a long process. No one's going to be like evicted overnight by any means. There is some open rooms right now, so we're just going to hope that everyone phases out. I have to get some financing in order to start the renovations. We still got to apply for permits. We're planning on, you know, everyone kind of phasing out of there, then doing the work that we need to do, and then opening it back up.
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
And to this, this owner only, or, I mean, I hate to do that, but this, let's do this.
Madam Chair, it's also a licensing board issue. The licensing board separately has to weigh in on this, so.
So let's just make it to this owner only, just for double, double protection. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm going to call the next case, sorry. Case 993-386-11-Greemount Street. Are you moving forward?
Madam Chair, I'd like to-
Hold on, hold on one second.
Name and address.
It's going to be requested deferral.
Okay.
Name and address for the record, please.
George Marancy with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston.
We'll make a motion for a deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusals?
I recuse myself for the vote.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
You have a date of March 24th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-0521, 16 Stanley Street. This is proposed to construct a two-family in a vacant lot. Violation is Article 65, Section 33, 32. This is in the NDOD review required. Article 65, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small, the business address of 51 Dobson Road, Brentwood, Mass. With me today is Mr. Astrid Nicholas, who's the owner of the property.
So why did we defer you the last time?
We deferred us the last time because we changed the interior design of the plans. What we actually did, based on our community input, was we reduced the number of bedrooms, took the living space out of the basement and out of the attic, and reduced the unit size to 950 square feet. That's why we deferred.
So each unit is 950 square feet and it's two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
And then was, did that change a violations in any way?
No, not at all.
Okay.
And so we're seeking to erect a two-family dwelling with two parking spaces on a vacant lot. The lot's been vacant for well over 15 years. The zoning sub-district for it is a 2F 6,000. We have approximately 3,500 square feet. The violations are as follows. NDOD, it's overlay design, so we require the PDA design review. FAR, Madam Chair, requirement in this area is point 4. We are proposing point 6. The front yard requirement is 15 feet. We have 12 in the front, which is modal.
Are you modal?
That is correct. And the side yard requirement is 10 feet. We have 10 on one side, which driveway is, and 7 feet on the other side. With regard to community process, we did have a meeting sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Number of Butters came out. Most people were supportive of the project because the vacant lot has been overgrown with weeds for a number of years. They want to see it developed.
Okay, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Facy Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved, PDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 972-669-32 to 34 Tolman Street. This is to build a dormer, rebuild the front porch, extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article 65, Section 42, conformity with the existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 9, Section 1, extension of a nonconforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small, business address of 51 Dobson Road, Brentwood, Mass. With me today is Mr. James Chen, who's the architect for the project. Madam Chair, we are seeking relief today to extend living space into the basement. We're erecting dormers and replacing the existing front porch, which was rotted out in bad condition.
And is this a one or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family?
It's a three-family, excuse me.
It's a three-family?
Yep.
So tell us about the basement. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
The basement floor ceiling height is 7'2".
And is there any bedroom space in the basement?
Yes, you'll be proposing two bedrooms in the basement.
Two bedrooms? Window wells, or are they above grade?
Window wells.
Okay. And tell us about the dormer. Counselor?
Yes, the dormer is a shed dormer, coming off the sides. I think it's only adding about 200 square feet.
Less than that. It's about 15 square feet.
And thus, thus the height violation, which we think we're being cited erroneously, because we're not exceeding the 35 feet, three-story peak of the, of the property and of the requirement with the, with the dormers.
So there's one unit in the basement, and then there is a unit on the first and second floor, second and third floor?
Second, third floor is one unit. First floor is one unit, and the basement is another unit.
Okay. So the second, the third, let's see. The third unit has three bedrooms plus a guest room?
That is correct.
Plus a home office?
Yep.
And then the first floor has a, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms? I'm looking at a Plan X1 that says three bedrooms. Is that what I'm seeing?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, you're correct.
So yes, it's three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms and two bathrooms.
Okay, and the basement has two bedrooms? Two bedrooms?
That's correct.
Assuming that some of that space that's called a bathroom is a kitchen?
No, the kitchen-
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, we got a problem. You said the basement height was 7'2"?
7'2".
Okay, you know, it's a three-family, correct?
That's correct.
Three-family, the minimum is 7'6".
Okay.
They didn't sign us for the, ISD didn't sign us for the building code.
But you would have gotten cited. You will get cited when you go back.
Yeah, I mean, it's violation of code.
That's true.
You, you have, the only alternative is not using the living space, or dig it, dig it out, dig out the basement floor.
They probably would take out the basement to meet that requirement.
All right, well, then, so just to tell you what we'll do, motion to deny building code relief, so we get out.
Of course.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fanil, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There is a robust community process surrounding this proposal, including multiple Butters meetings. The applicant did do some of this work illegally, but has worked consistently with ISD and our office to bring everything to the appropriate, appropriate community process. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve and same time deny building code relief so that the basement height will be adjusted appropriately.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we just add these letters of support, this 10, for the record, keep in the file?
Calling the next case, calling case 927-288, 11 to 13 Pierce Street. This is to add a fifth dwelling unit in the basement. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use, applying to add an additional unit in a non-conforming four-unit building. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking loading requirement, insufficient off-street parking. Article 69, Section 8, MFR is a forbidden use in a 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 69, Section 8, dwelling units in the basements are forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 69, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Fourth Road, Brantree. With me is Charlie Donovan, who's the owner of the property.
So I have a question right off the bat. You know, this project is different than the previous one in that the basement units are forbidden uses. So tell us about why this should be approved, why this basement unit should be approved. There is, it's already a four-family, right?
That is correct.
And you're proposing two, two basement units?
One basement unit.
One basement unit, yeah?
That's correct.
So why should the basement be...
So it complies with the building code, as Mr. Ehrlich pointed out in the previous project that you heard.
But it's a forbidden use in this district. The other one, it wasn't a forbidden use.
Oh, I was, you asked me the reasons why it would...
The reason why...
So we have a ceiling height of 7'6". We comply with that. We had a, we had, this came before you guys before. At that point, there was an Butters meeting, and actually, nobody showed up at the Butters meeting, so the project was deferred at that point and suggested that they schedule another Butters meeting, again with ONS. ONS scheduled the other meeting. A neighbor showed up. They were all in support. I think some letters have been supported by Brian Flynn from the Mayor's Office to you guys.
And where's the sixth unit going?
I'm sorry, there's no sixth unit. It's...
It says four to six.
It's, it's a five unit.
I'm sorry, four to five. Where am I looking? Oh, yeah, it says existing property type, four to six units. Okay, so four to five, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing is fine, as the attorney has stated. The existing condition shows a seven-foot ceiling, and the proposed condition shows a seven-foot six ceiling, so they are paying attention.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. Two Butters meetings were held for this proposal, and our office wants to go on record in full support. Thank you.
Hi there, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Hank Cohen, representing Ricardo Arroyo's office. We would also like to voice our support for this project.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, I'm going to go in opposition to basement dwelling units where the use is forbidden.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BO, case 998-180, 36 to 40 Winthrop Street. Companion case, 998-181, 36 to 40 Winthrop Street. Winthrop Street here, okay. This is an attached addition on the right side of the existing building. The use of the community center with offices and increase the occupancy to 188 persons. Violation is Article 10, Section 1, five-foot buffer is required, limitation of parking area. Article 69, Section 12, insufficient rear yard setback. And Article 69, Section 29, insufficient parking. We have building code. This is the ninth addition, 780 CMR, chapter 7. Openings in exterior walls three feet from the lot line is not allowed. 1.4, 1.14, 0.20 revised plan, provided however, building code violation not corrected. Also note dumpster on the municipal street and parking is, in a right-of-way, is not allowed with BPD, BT, BTD, approval and property deed language. Name and address for the record, please.
Name, Paul Chibwese, representative CBC Design, Design Architect. I'm here with the president of People's Club of Nigeria.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
And members, uh, excuse me?
So please, as is our usual case, the first thing we do is address the building code violation. So the question to you is, are you still requesting that, that relief from the building code, or do you have a response to fix that relief?
Madam Chair, that has been corrected. We updated the drawings and submitted that to TNT Mas.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny building code relief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So tell us about the project itself now.
So this is a community hall for nonprofit organization that serves the community. They use this hall for meetings.
So how, first of all, tell us the zoning district.
It's a shopping district, too.
It's a neighborhood shopping or community commercial?
Commercial.
Okay, community commercial, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and the building size?
So it's a 5,000 square foot. I'm sorry, this, the lot is 5,000 square foot, and the building is 2,800. So we're adding 1,200 additional space, which is horizontal. Everything's horizontal, just to make the hall a little bit bigger. We have, we have existing non-conforming rear setback. So we're just following the existing building footprint. We're not going beyond that.
Okay. And what's the capacity of this hall?
So it's, it's kind of about 180 people.
180?
Yes.
And will there be music in here?
Not all the time, sometimes.
Sometimes live music or tape music?
Tape music, yeah.
Tape, okay. And are you doing anything about soundproofing or anything like that?
Yes, yes, we're going to do, the walls are going to be sound, sound, sunny, have going to have sunny attenuation, insulation for the walls, and also acoustic ceilings.
Okay. And then, let's see, how many parking spaces are you providing?
Okay, so let me address that. So most of the businesses in the area make, they make use of the existing community parking. That's what we've been going on, and that's what we've been using. The community parking is owned by the city of Boston. So there's no, there's no additional space to add parking spaces.
So you will not be providing any parking on-site?
We don't have the, we don't have the, we don't have the land to do that.
You don't have the space, so basically, you're going, okay, I see, okay?
But like I said, we have enough parking provided by the city, and that's also being used by other businesses in the area.
Okay. So your project is at the corner of Winthrop and Harvard?
Yes.
Okay. So we were looking, looking at the layout that you have here. So this space here, will this be converted into, what is that space right there on this, this drawing here?
So that's the, that's actually the rear of the building.
Okay.
And it's borrowed by another building.
Okay. So that's...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're talking about here? Okay, so that's the side of the building, where we're going to have addition.
I see.
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to be handicapped accessible?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine. I have a question, but so that's a city-owned parking lot behind the building?
Yeah, in front of the building.
Or in front of the building, okay.
Yes, and there's a lot of parking spaces.
Yeah, it looks like it. Are most of your events in the evening or during the day?
Mostly in the evening, but sometimes we'll have like seminars, seminars from the local community. So, but during the day, we don't have a whole lot of activities during the day.
So how many parking spaces, do you know how many parking spaces there are in the city lot?
There are more than, I think there are more than 300.
It's like, it's like 180, isn't it?
Yeah, it's more than 300, I think.
Okay, and you have a maximum capacity of 180, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're going to be having mostly evenings, weekend, weekend hours?
Mostly weekends, yes.
And is this a membership organization, or is it...
It's a membership.
Okay.
Without birthday parties?
Yes, but also the, the facility is going to be open to the public. It's not exclusive.
Okay. Okay. Any other, and any other questions from the board?
I got a question. So the, your dumpster, so is it, do you have a right, is that your property all the way up until that wooden line, or is that, because your plans show that it's a right-of-way and not all your property?
So on the drawings, right, on the site?
On the front page, right?
On page C11.
C11?
All the front pages, I guess it's the same, but is, so you don't own all the way up to the line, to the fence, to the 10-foot right-of-way? So then where are you going to put your dumpster?
Okay, so on A1, sorry, on A11?
C11.
Okay, so on C11, we're going to put the dumpster, that's a location going to be on our property.
Where?
If you go to A11, it's indicated on A11.
Looks like it's in the middle of the street on A11.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying. Yes, okay, so we, okay, I'm sorry. So we don't, you're correct. We'll be using this as a space for drop-offs right now. So it's not, it's not to be used by any other entity or any other organization, so we're using it, that's where, that's why we want to use that as a dumpster area, so for easy accessibility to, for the traps.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. And a Butters meeting was held on October 10th with no opposition from the community. We did take a look at the parking situation prior to taking our stance on it, and that parking lot is underutilized. It's right across the street on Habadav, from the Hyde Park branch of the Boston Public Library. The only really foot traffic that kind of goes on through there, people visiting Ron's bowling alley, possibly the library, so usually people in and out of there within, you know, under an hour anyway. So that's why we want to offer our support. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Hank Cohen with Ricardo Arroyo's office. We would also like to voice our support for this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, I'm getting BPDA design review, just because I have the...
Could we have BPDA design review for screening and buffering, and to make sure that everything related to the building is onsite, included, onsite, including the dumpster and anything else, okay?
Oh, yes, well, no building code relief.
And no building code relief. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with those providers.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 992-741-66 to 66B Fondale Road. This is seeking to erect a three-story residential building with three units and six parking spaces. The violation is Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking loading requirement, maneuvering areas, designed parking and spite, space sizes. Article 67, Section 33, conformity with existing street wall alignment, no model alignment survey provided. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 67, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. And Article 67, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street with Drago and Toscano, representing Mark Novaco, who's part of the development team at 66 Fondale. The proposal before you, we're seeking to erect a three-story building. These would be three condominium units on a vacant lot with six parking spaces interior. Three of those would be tandem. This particular zoning sub-district is a 3F 4,000. Our lot size is 3,228 square feet. We actually made a number of modifications over time with this project. We now have a seven-foot rear setback, and we also pulled in the second and third floor, four feet, four inches in the rear, to have less massing in the back of the building. We added a deck to the rear of the property as well, and we had, we were able to add three more tandem spaces. These are going to be sold, sold as condos, so those would go with each unit. Just to go over the violations, lot size required is 4,000. We're at 3,228 square feet. It's a .8 FAR area, we're at 1.38. Open space required, 800, we're at 304. Our front yard is eight, but that and 20 is required, but we would be lining up with the other houses directly in that line. Our side yard was required as 10, we're at 3'1" on either side, and rear yard would be 40. We would be at seven, which lines up actually closer, better than the other buildings around us. We also got parking maneuverability because of the tandem spaces. Our unit sizes, these are all duplex units. They vary from 1,271 to 1,340. The second floor would have kitchen, living room, and a half-bath, and the third floor would have two-bed, two-bath. These are all two-bed, two-bath, two-and-a-half-bath units.
What are these buildings at the end of the street?
There, Madam Chair.
These, these blocky buildings?
Yeah, they're, they're in a project, like a project...
Are they part of the BHA, Archdale?
I think they're affordable housing for sure, so I don't know if they're exactly part of that, but they had mentioned it when we had the Butters meeting, so...
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, I'm looking at them, it's, you know, right, although I have to say, the design does not seem very contextual. It seems a little...
And I'm also looking at the aerial, and it looks like a seven-foot rear setback. It's awful. Everybody else provides more, more setback, rear yard setback than this one does.
I mean, if you look at the building next to us, I mean, it goes back fairly far.
Well, that's the exception. Everybody else provides more, more privacy to their Butters.
It did not come up. We had no opposition at the Butters meeting, but we did pull back the second and third floor.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, these are mostly traditional housing, looking houses, and this kind of a boxy, modern-type design.
We can certainly, on design review, change that to something more modern, if that's what the board...
The last time I'm going to say this, anything that comes before us cannot come in with a concept, because that's essentially what we're seeing, is concept. We have no meat to this. How can we approve something blank, you know? And, and, you know?
Would you like me to have the architect...
I mean, I'm a little surprised.
Maybe, let's, let's defer this and just have it come in as details to it so that we know and can see what's going on, okay?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Well...
March...
Could we get an earlier date if possible?
What?
Do you have an early, like a March date if possible?
Four seconds, is that what you're up to?
I dropped the ball.
We do March 24th at 11:30.
We're going to see you at March 24th at 11:30, and please make sure that this is as built out as possible and as contextual as possible.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Meeting is now adjourned.